Stay as long as they want, but also go for their homework.
Okay.
Student report, then we go into the presentation.
Good evening. I'm going to call to order a regular meeting of the Hastings High School Board of Education for December 17th, 2024. Apologies for the tight space. We were up in the big room last week. That was lightly attended, so we'll try to get it right next time. We're going to open up this evening with student reports, if that's okay with you guys? Who's going first? Kai?
Kai. Hello. Okay, so I'll make it brief. Starting off with, early decisions from colleges have started to arrive. We've gotten a whole bunch over last week, and we've got a few more schools coming in this week. The Instagram page is going to be posting everyone's decisions, as long as they choose to submit them, along with an adorable little baby photo. So if you're interested in seeing where Class of 2025 is headed next, please check it out. The talent show was this past Friday. It was so much fun. It was this wonderful arrangement of all sorts of acts, lots of musical talent, lots of people came in. A whole bunch of people showed up, and we had a few acts that were supposed to happen, didn't end up happening, but that did not dull the energy in the slightest. So huge thank you to the SU and to everybody who participated. I and the other members of the senior SU have started selling Carol grams during lunch, so a bunch of us are going to get to skip a few classes, and we'll walk around singing holiday carols to everyone who paid $5 to annoy their friends. And lastly, on my part, I just wanted to say that I have heard so much talk about the bond and the Board of Ed's actions, which I usually never hear, I mean, as evidenced by all of them, but yeah, I just wanted to say that there has definitely been a much larger degree of connection between the Board of Ed and the actual students than I've seen in a while. So just thought that was interesting.
Thank you, Kai. Thank you. Hi, Al.
So last Thursday was the 7th and 8th grade winter concert, which featured the band, chorus, orchestra, and jazz band, and I'm sure they all did amazing and that everyone was proud of the talent presented and the exciting music performances. And then this Thursday will be the Hastings High School Winter Concert, which will start at 7:00 PM, and it will feature the high school's orchestra, chorus, band, and jazz band musicians, so be sure to attend and support the music program. And then finally, starting after school this Friday, is officially holiday break, and we will be off from December 21st to January 5th, a long two weeks. Whether it's with your friends, family, or getting that much deserved relaxation time, I wish everyone a happy holidays and break.
Thank you, Al.
If I may, before we move further, some may know that the governor has mandated that every school board in the state of New York have the roles that we've had in Hastings now a long time. And I spend a lot of time with fellow superintendents, and the last couple of months, my email has been filled with superintendents and others trying to find out what's our magic. You know, how do we have student members ex officio, but student members of the board have done this now for a long time, and done so effectively, yes, bringing really truthful and upbeat news, but when we need the other-sided truth, you bring it. So again, I want to let you all know that the state is watching how well you do this, especially in most of the areas in Westchester County, so thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. And feel free to hang out. So this evening, we're going to open up with a presentation, following on a couple of other presentations from our technical partners, Architects Engineers, Land Group, PBDW. And right off the top, I want to make it very clear that, so what we're voting on tonight as a board is the scope of the SECR designation, what's going to go to the state for the State Environmental Quality Review. So the scope of that is, you know, it's our sort of, one of our ultimate steps in getting information from the state that we need in order to make decisions about the project that we're going to undertake. So, which is to say that tonight is not about ruling things out, it's about what we might include in. We need the state to have it, to take a look at. And our technical partners are here to update us on the current state of plans, to go through updated Q and As that reflect questions that have come in from the community, as well as concerns or questions that have been raised by trustees. We're going to go into all of those things by detail. And then, at the end of it, what the vote would be is to say to our technical partners, yes, include these topics in the SECR that's going to go to New York State, so the information we get back covers the possibilities that we would entertain. There's, we're not locking ourselves into any decisions tonight. We're not saying declaratively or definitively that something is in or out. We, you know, we have the flexibility to change our mind. We're just scoping what the SECR is going to be. So with that in mind, we're going to welcome Matt Milne from Land Group. Welcome back. And he's going to take us through the initial phase of the updated plans that reflect the meeting that we had two weeks ago.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Is there a way to advance the slides?
Oh, yeah.
Would help.
And the presentation he's showing us, as usual, is available on Board Docs.
Yes. Is that open?
This happened to me last time. Sort of a rite of passage.
It's okay.
All right, very good. Well, thank you for having us tonight. Again, my name is Matt Milne. I am a principal and architect of Land Associates. With me is Danielle Farrell, Assistant Vice President, Architect, Rena Mandy from PBDW, and Bob Kirnen, who you heard speak from the LA Group at the last meeting, Kevin Sawyer, who you haven't met yet, who would be a construction manager, potentially giving us construction management advice on the project. So just a brief overview and agenda, just to reiterate what Alex said, tonight is not about formally making a decision about what the scope of work is. Can everybody hear me in the back if I turn? Okay. Tonight is about determining the scope of work that we need to evaluate for the environmental impact of the project. That's what the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECR, requires. It's not about determining what the public has approved or not approved today. It's about evaluating the environmental impact of a defined scope of work. So many of you have come to our presentations already, and you've seen a lot of these slides, and if I happen to be too quick, please feel free to say, slow down, because I do speak quickly. The process is a pre-referending or pre-bond process. Step one, we've already gone through and assessed the physical condition of your facilities. Step two, we've developed a scope of work and presented that to the Board of Ed and discussed this in a public setting several times, and engaged the community. So these three steps are occurring. As you can see on the right, those are the responsibilities, the delineation of our responsibilities as design professionals representing the school district. Land has primarily been responsible for the capital improvements from the BCS and bringing this whole thing together. The LA Group has primarily been responsible for the athletic field improvements, and PBDW has been primarily responsible for the, all of really the groundwork laying us into this project for the additions and renovations, or potential additions and renovations to the Farragut complex. With that, I will introduce Rena.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Rena.
Good evening. Thank you for having me again. I just want to reiterate that we started this process in January of this year, and before even thinking about what we do to the building, we went through a multi-month process to hear about the building, hear about it from faculty, from administrators, from students, from multiple different groups, and really, alongside with that, analyzing the usable program area of the building. So taking a look at what, how the space is currently being used, how it functions well, how it doesn't function well, and we really scoped that in a very extensive programming report that was presented to the board at the end of May. That, that report and the presentation are available on the bond website. So that really set the stage for us being able to even think about the first step of, okay, what do we need to resolve, right? What are the high-level needs? And what do we need to tackle in terms of the high-level needs? Just to back up even from here a little bit, those high-level needs brought us to a master, a concept design of master planning that was quite extensive. And we paired, after having looked at that entire master planning process, we took a step back and said, okay, what's the first piece of that master plan? Because only the first piece is really what's going to be digestible to include in a current bond, right? The full scope of needs for the building can be much larger. We're not looking to do everything at once, but there was a lot, what we discovered is there was a lot to tackle. There was really a lot to tackle. And what we wanted to start with was figuring out, what is that first step to kind of unlock the rest of the master plan, and what needs to be done in terms of that? And so the biggest, I think some of you, or most of you probably are familiar with some of those proposals right now. The biggest one, right, is moving the cafeteria from the third floor of the Washington Wing into the courtyard. And so that new cafeteria construction is really a reclamation of the old cafeteria space as instructional space. So the third floor of the Washington Wing is primarily a middle, entirely actually, a middle school wing, other than the cafeteria. It is in the best location to really program more middle school space, which was the biggest high-level need that we found in that master planning report. And so moving the cafeteria out of that space allowed us to free up space in that ideal Washington Wing for classrooms, resource rooms, special ed, for all of the program that is needed for the middle school. You know, we learned that the middle school, which we've talked about before, that the middle school only takes up 28% of the total usable program area of the building, and that's serving 50% of the users. So they're crushed. I mean, the, everyone that we spoke to really felt that they were crushed, but I think the result of our support, our, our report kind of supported that with some data. So that's the primary reason for the first recommendation, right? Is freeing up that instructional space for the middle school. We also, in that renovation, create some instructional space for the high school. So the high school needs are that the classrooms are undersized, and there's, because the classrooms are undersized, breakout space is needed. So space for smaller work groups, after-school groups, individual teaching, student meetings is really, areas for that are really highly needed in rooms that don't take up a whole classroom as well. So we create some of that off of the cafeteria addition in the courtyard for the high school space. And then resolving the building circulation. For, I think, almost anyone who's been in the building, circulation is really a learned thing at Hastings High School and Farragut Middle School, right? To navigate the space of the building is very challenging. We looked through kind of a history of how the buildings were pieced together, and thought about how, how that came to be as well, and how to best unlock that circulation to really free up the flow of students and faculty to make it easier for everyone. And kind of the last point of that project is to address what is experienced as cafeteria crowding, mostly for the, for the middle school. But I really do want to stress kind of those, those first three points as drivers for this, and then also addressing the cafeteria crowding. So reasons for the cafeteria addition as our first recommendation in lieu of any of the other phases of the master planning project that we had looked at. One of the phases was some reshuffling of programs in the building that really helped to reconcile how departments work, to really help the students and faculty to better collaborate together. That couldn't really be done until you addressed, like, the heart of the problem. So that, that we're recommending as the second phase, the cafeteria reclamation and relocation is the first phase. The third phase, we had designed an addition off of the Washington Wing. The Washington addition is off of the Washington Wing, which is a currently, a long wing of the building that is essentially a dead-end corridor aside from the bridge connecting it to the high school. So for middle school space, it would be extending that, that long wing of the building. And without really unlocking some of the circulation issues first, could exacerbate some of the circulation issues that are experienced now. Notably, though, the Washington addition doesn't gain the large classroom space that's needed for the middle school. So those large, large areas versus kind of smaller, we, we had programmed the Washington addition with some faculty offices. Again, this is the third phase of the master plan, faculty offices, breakout spaces, and, and special education as well. So those are much smaller program areas than the large classroom space that could be gained as the reclamation of the Washington Wing third floor. It also wouldn't gain any flex space for the high school. So what's really nice about the cafeteria reclamation and relocation is it addresses needs for both of the schools, both the middle school and the high school, in one project. And just to note that the cost estimation for the Washington addition also came in higher than the cafeteria relocation project. So I noted before, the other phases are intended to follow the cafeteria relocation. We really view the cafeteria relocation as establishing a new heart of the building, and really kind of making the building function as a whole in its, in its footprint together. And some of those, you know, aside from the Washington addition, the relocation of spaces, and also just some smaller interventions that we looked at as Phase Four to update classrooms, can be taken, undertaken over time, and potentially within capital improvement budget. The Farragut entry, the, the reasons for recommendation of the Farragut entry, number one is really addressing circulation, more particularly resolving accessibility to the school. So really providing, not just thinking of an accessible entrance as, as kind of a side thought, but really providing an equitable access for all types of users to the school. It's also located, where we're proposing, located in what was the historic kind of courtyard between three buildings, between the Farragut Wing, the Washington Wing, and the Mount Hope Wing. So that naturally is the kind of center of circulation from the outside of the building. So it reestablishes that. I know that there was a question that came up about encroaching on the Farragut gym space. It does not. It builds out in front of the Farragut gym space. Right now, it's, you know, paved area right out here, that's, that's really kind of blocked off, so it's making use of that space. And then the front facade is intended to be metal panels that are distinguished from the historic brick, that are easily customizable if we wanted to add some imagery or graphics, or something kind of noting that the new entry. And would be in a highly durable, one of the materials that we've looked at is a cradle-to-cradle certified recyclable material, so something that we feel strongly about as well. And so the glazed areas are really limited to the, to the side returns, and the skylight as a fiber reinforced polymer product for daylighting, to really increase daylighting into that space, and be able to enhance the experience into the, the new entry. And with that, I'll pass it back to Matt.
Thank you, Rena.
Okay. Thanks, Rena. As far as the conceptual site design, I think everybody who came to the last public meeting probably gave a lot of valuable feedback to the Board of Ed. And in response to that feedback, the Board of Ed has directed our team to provide a solution that provides more equitable gender access and consolidates all sports to the Burke Estate. By moving the softball field from Hillside Elementary down to the location number two, the school district could gain a softball field with natural grass, drainage improvements to two and one, both on the baseball and softball fields. There is still the proposition to build a synthetic turf field with athletic field lighting, a smaller grandstand, and a sense of arrival determined by the vehicular access and the need for emergency access, and the need for ADA compliance on the site. So really quickly, one through seven are noted there. I think the most important part that we don't talk about is the stormwater basin and treatment area. For those concerned about the environment, this is a requirement of the DEC to hold the water, to prevent unwarranted runoff, and to filter the water before it enters the stormwater structures beyond. So I think the Board of Ed has, has heard some of the feedback from a lot of the community. Having two young ladies who play softball, and a wife who's a softball coach, I know that she encouraged me to make this improvement, but this really comes at the direction of the Board of Ed. This, number six is a natural grass field, so you have diversity in both synthetic turf and natural grass. You have the opportunity to play on both. You have the diversity to play on both. You have the ability to play later into the evenings, which is absolutely crucial in the Northeast. As you can see outside, we run out of daylight at a certain period of time. And to make the best use of a synthetic turf field, you really need, you really need lighting. In terms of the softball field, you, you get what is essentially considered a state-of-the-art, natural grass softball field with skin clay, skin clay infield, dugouts at both the softball field and the baseball field. And in the centerfield area of the softball field, you have a batting cage tunnel netted area could be used mutually by both teams. Here's some renderings that we've been developing. Now granted, it's been two weeks. We're working really quickly and hard to change these schemes, but on the bottom, you can see what the synthetic turf field would look like. A reduced-size grandstand, at one point, I think we showed 600 seats. We're now showing 400 seats. That terraced hillside that looks down on the field also makes a natural spectating area. That allows us to reduce the, the fixed, constructed seating areas. On the top-left corner, you can see glimpses of the softball field, the baseball field in the background, synthetic turf field on the bottom right of the top-left image, and the existing natural grass field, which gets modified. On the top-right image, you can see the difference in grade between the synthetic turf field and the natural grass field. There is a need to construct a retaining wall, and you can see the adjacency of the softball field to both. So with that, I get to talk about the most exciting parts of the, of the project. These are the, the non-glamorous, blue-collar, capital improvement projects, things that you absolutely must do to preserve a building of this age and vintage. You're talking about masonry restoration, facade preservation, replacement of critically obsolete mechanical systems, upgrades to mechanical systems to make them code compliant, adapting your building to today's contemporary usage for electrical service, providing additional outlets in classrooms for all the new modern devices that we use for our instructional environments. At Hillside, we continue to show the, the mechanical system overhaul, so this is born from the Building Condition Survey, which is what we call our BCS. And the BCS has determined that there are some mechanical systems that need replacement or modernization over at Hillside. Replace four heat and ventilation units. Provide mechanical ventilation. Replace pneumatic controls. Replace lead-positive water piping. Now granted, I, I admit, I, I will have a hard time reading this slide. So what I can say is, on the top, where you read Farragut Middle School additions, there is a price tag that says subtotal. Alex, could you please help me on the subtotal? I just can't read it.
I'm backing up from my screen.
Okay. All right, $21.80. So this really hasn't changed throughout most of our public presentations, the additions, the locations, the, the BCS improvements. I appreciate that. Thank you. I should have taken this to begin with. My apologies. So the subtotal of $21.8, or roughly $22 million, for the additions, the renovation work, all of the work that PBDW has suggested, the miscellaneous capital improvements with the masonry restoration, MEP upgrades, those are all listed at the Farragut Middle School, High School at the top section. In the middle section, where it says the Burke Estate, for those who have great eyes in the back, that's the athletic facility and field improvements. So we have made some updates to this. We did add a softball field, so there's an added cost for that. We did reduce the size of the grandstands. We did want to make sure that there's a press box consideration. If you're going to host a football game at night, you will likely need a press box, so that was not provided in some of the prior estimates. We are showing drainage improvements, parking spaces, of course, miscellaneous site improvements. Dugouts was an add, back into the project's scope. Drainage improvements of the turf baseball field was an add. So we are at $7.65 million on the Burke Estate Athletic Facility and Field Improvements, and no changes from the prior presentation regarding Hillside. We're at $3 million. This brings us to an all-in bond cost estimate of $46.3 million, which you can see circled on the bottom right. We did make some modifications to the installation of the athletic improvements, such as the synthetic turf field and the grass fields. It's our understanding, based on several people's reports, that you may potentially hit rock. We do plan to do our due diligence. We've secured a quote to perform a geotechnical investigation to determine where we might find rock, to analyze the makeup of the soil, to determine its drainage characteristics, to advise the school district and the Board of Ed of their SECR responsibilities. So we, we hope to begin that geotechnical investigation in January. For those of you who are wondering when this might happen, if the bond was approved, so on the left side, May 20th, 2025, if the Board of Ed decides to go forward with a bond proposition, they would likely host it on the budget vote date, and we would try to phase the work so that we can take advantage of getting, the, the work that is designed the quickest, that is permitted the quickest, done or started the earliest. In other words, the site athletic improvements will likely have a seasonal dependency on summer construction, highly dependent on weather. The ideal timeframe to start that work would be May. Some of this work is really dependent upon things that are, quite honestly, outside of our control. The permitting agency will have a review period. There's no way we can determine what that review period will be when we get there, so we forecast based on their current backlog. But essentially, this whole project tracks out to be substantially complete by May 31st, 2028. And as we've continued to show this slide, I think it's important for the public to see the progression. So on the left, in the column on the left in yellow, are the steps that we've already surpassed. The column on the right, where you see number 10, is sort of where we are today. It's the Board of Ed approval of the scope of work. And procedurally, if you were going to construct an addition over 10,000 square feet, SED would require a formal resolution from the Board of Ed, formalizing the approval of the scope of work. Now, the Board of Ed has taken the precaution of going through this step just to formalize what our evaluation of the environmental impact of the work would be, so that we're able to evaluate, based on SECR guidelines, what the environmental impact of the project would be. Now, that can be anything from stormwater to light pollution, just for example. So there's a lot of steps ahead of us, some of which become obsolete with the changing of the scope of work. We will enter into a SECR evaluation, which we started about two or three weeks ago. Our due diligence on the geotechnical investigation will help us advise the board of what potential risks they may, may see. Performing a photometric analysis of the athletic field lighting, providing that to the Board of Ed, so we understand what the limitations of the technology of the current athletic field lighting are, and understanding what the repercussions potentially related to glare, light spill-over, maybe, so that the Board of Ed can make an educated and informed decision on behalf of the public about the project. So that leads us into a very lengthy question-and-answer sort of format. I'm going to try to hit some of these at a high end.
Yeah, I mean, so a lot of these are pre-existing ones that have been already into, I think we've talked about a lot of them, and they're here in the report, but we've talked about a lot of them. The new ones you marked with that symbol, is that correct? Or are these kind of interleaved here?
The new ones with the symbol are the ones from the website.
She's saying the new ones with the symbol are the ones from the, the website. Oh, the end, okay. Yeah, I think, I think if we want to sort of hit the new ones that have come up, so these would reflect the recent questions over the past two weeks from the community and from trustees. Yeah. But that, trustees, does that sound like a good place to go? Next? Yeah, no, the ones, there's a, there's a bunch of new ones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they're all available on Board Docs.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're not going to read these today. This is all available on Board Docs. For anybody who can't see or read the presentation, this will all be posted on the district's website.
Yeah, so we, we create a dedicated webpage on the website. You can get there. And right now, we're being exhaustive in putting everything up. So you go to the page, it explains what a bond is, the financing of bond relative to operating budget, very different and very important to understand. Down the right-hand side is every single presentation. Down the right-hand side is every single presentation, really since January, as Rena explained, and it goes back further than that, but we, since January, showed the conference of work, so it's all there. Then below that, below that are the FAQs. These have not been whittled down. This is, and now what you see. Later, we'll begin tightening them down, but we didn't want to do that until we had a sense from the board of, of what at least is this initial understanding for analytical purposes. Then we'll start to lay that there, but it is all up there for the public record in the kind of detail Hastings requires and needs and deserves.
All up there on the school website?
Go to the school website. The bottom-left on the, is a big thing, it says capital bond. You click on that, and it brings you right to the webpage that's dedicated to the bond. Explain the bond down the middle, down the right are every single presentation done, and below that are these FAQs. There are now three of them there, some of them redundant from what's within the presentation. We wanted to raise those up so we see them. We'll let you see them.
Listen, I'm going to go through them. I'll be quick. I'll paraphrase. If you say next question, I'll just continue to move on. But the gist of this question is, would we consider using shorter light poles? And the reality is, the taller the light pole, the less light spill over there is onto adjoining properties. You can imagine lower light poles are going to have to aim their lights more horizontally, and that has a greater chance for glare to the adjoining property owners, whereas a taller light post is pointing that light down, and that will allow us to keep all of the light that's being shot from that shielded LED light fixture down onto the school district's property. Okay, so that, that's essentially the gist of that.
Can I just add, on the, on the lighting thing, it comes up separately, I think. You know, it's an LED, it's a very modern LED lighting system that's highly variable, and there was a question that come in about dark sky certification.
Yeah.
And are you going there next?
I was going to go there.
I'll let you go. Go ahead.
So the LED lamps that, that the manufacturers make today, Musco's an athletic field lighting specialist, they're, they're 90, 95% of the industry. They make fully shielded LED lamps with app-based photometric and dimming controls. The school district can, of course, opt, opt to add operational standards to limit use, limit time of use into the evening, but essentially, these LED lamps allow us to direct the light right on the school district's property. And light spill over is very minimal, if there is any at all.
So Matt, I don't, this is what I don't understand. If I live in a house that's near the field, and we have tall lights on the field, you're saying that I'm not going to, if I walk out of my house, I'm not going to see the lights coming, the light's going to be coming from the tall light post, right?
You'll see lights, just like you see throughout the community, all over the place, but those lights will not be shining into your building, whereas the, the lights that you're seeing throughout your community are non-shielded, basically glaring towards your direction. These lights are shielded, meaning that the light actually prevents going in other directions. Just, I don't even know how to really describe it, but there would be a, I'm sorry, Danielle. Oh, thank you. Okay. Yeah.
No.
One more?
The photo.
So in terms of the dark sky international certification, most Musco, all Musco lighting fixtures are designed to the dark sky standards. But essentially, what I'm saying is, you'll see light, just like you see light in your community. It's not going to be pointed into your window. It, will it have a glare? The lower the fixture, and the more fixtures there are, the more likely there will be glare. The taller the fixture, 60, 80 feet and above, the less likely you are to see that fixture and for it to be a nuisance into your adjoining property.
Can I mention also, you know, the way, because these lights are variable, the way they get used, or would get used typically, if you have a late-night game, they're at full strength or game level. But for practices, you know, or, or when it's dusk, they're used just to augment. You can, just like a dimmer in your house, 10%, 15%, 20%, you can turn on just one of them or two of them, you can use just half the field. So in the, in the, and again, the outdoor sports are not winter sports. They don't happen in the darkest part of the year. So a lot of this lighting would be supplementary, and so its usage would be, you know, pretty circumscribed just by the reality of how the sports get played. And then, as you mentioned, there's also operational things we can do, operational covenants we can make about how they'd be used, how often they'd be used, how late, things like that, so.
It's really difficult to see. On the top-right image, though, is a photometric analysis. It shows you the foot candle, foot candles, or the amount of illumination on the surface of the ground. And so that is, if you could see closer up, and I, I can promise you, if you go home and you download this image, you'll see no light on the ground beyond the perimeter of the playing surface, or, or beyond the owner's property, beyond the school district's property. That is incredibly beneficial as an adjoining property owner to understand that you're not getting spill-over light from a neighboring property. This is a question about whether or not the athletic field lighting is necessary. If you're building a synthetic turf field in, in, in the Northeast, it's absolutely recommended. It maximizes your return on investment. It's going to increase your playable hours. It's going to provide you with the resource that you expect to be able to use late into the evenings. Otherwise, having a synthetic turf field without athletic field lighting really only, it just limits the amount of use you can have, and, and it is not the best usage of public's money. Grandstand comment, yes, we could settle for something less grand. Thank you for that. Would additional parking at the Burke Estate also benefit the Farragut complex? We're going to be strapped to find good material at a cost-effective way to build a vehicular service drive and parking areas without hitting rock and finding it to be too cost prohibitive. So I, I think we're going to try to build the amount of parking we think is absolutely essential for this facility, but to expand it beyond that and give contributory parking back to Farragut complex, I think that might be a stretch.
But just to point out, you know, if it's a modest amount of spaces, I mean, one of the issues that we have as a community is that essentially, Rosedale is our, part of our parking lot at this point. So there would be 30 spaces that, and expectation is that staff would park there during the day when they weren't in use. Just, I'm just saying, like, that's our expectation, a reasonable expectation.
So number nine is probably a question that everybody here wants to know the answer to, and it's a landmine question. Should children be playing sports on artificial turf due to health concerns? I, I have my own children. I will help them make their decisions. But if you have a student athlete playing here at Hastings, it is very likely, almost improbable, that they will be able to avoid playing on a synthetic turf field in one of the neighboring properties or neighboring school districts as just a means of the interscholastic competition. If they sign up to play sports at Hastings, your surrounding school districts all have synthetic turf fields. Are there other options available in the market besides our, artificial turf? Has the Board of Ed and design team looked into hybrid fields such as turf talents? Absolutely. We've been looking at that option since it was brought to our attention two board meetings ago. We've done quite a bit of research on the product. It's primarily a natural grass system. This is one I will read, because these are very important points. It only has about 10% synthetic turf. So if you can imagine the wear issues that we already experienced with natural grass, the school district already experiences, and some of the maintenance, maintenance challenges they have, this sort of doesn't, it doesn't resolve that at all. You do need to buy special mowing equipment, or I should say, the manufacturer recommends it. There are no installations in the United States. It's been on the market since 2019. There are no installations in New York State. And probably the, for us, the most difficult situation to overcome is the New York State procurement laws. This is what's considered by New York State or the New York State Education Department as a proprietary product, meaning there are no equals to it. In New York State, we have an obligation to provide the public with a competitive bidding and procurement process that allows for open bidding or a competitive bidding environment. Without comparable or equivalent products and options, it is unlikely the New York State Education Department will allow us to use this product. So we bring this to your attention to say, yes, it is, it is a, it's an emerging trend. It's something that we see being used in Europe. It perhaps will make its market grab into the United States. It is a relatively newer product. It would be a little bit, I would say, in my experience, ahead of the curve for the school district to invest this kind of money into a unique, one-of-a-kind sort of installation for something that, quite honestly, has a little bit more tried and true product on the market. So we did take a look at it, happy to answer more questions about it. How will the stormwater be treated in the retention pond prior to being introduced back into the ground? So this is mandated by the New York State DEC. There's a, a stormwater pollution prevention plan. I call it a SWIP. I don't even usually say that. But there is a requirement to have a Speedy's permit. That permit requires us to treat the runoff, to capture the runoff, to treat it, to remove total suspended solids, essentially filtering it. There would be the opportunity here for some plantings to create more of a, an aesthetically nice-looking bio-retention pond, but this is a necessary requirement when you increase the impervious coverage of a site. So that is a, it is a requirement of the project. Somebody asked for a cost-benefit analysis. We're, we're certainly going to prepare that. We've been working on it. We are collecting data from the school district on operational costs and using our background data to compare that against the cost of synthetic turf fields. Would the centralized entry on Farragut mean that we lose the current basement Farragut gym? Now, simply, I think Rena already answered that question. Okay.
Yeah.
Sure. Some of these have been answered before, but just to reiterate a little bit, so moving fifth grade to Hillside was not investigated fully because of a few kind of high-level reasons. So needing the amount of space that they would need would mean either building another level at Hillside, which would require significant structural reinforcement of the existing building, coming at a really major expense, and constructability to operate classes below that during the time that, of construction as well, or building out, so, which is, which would be limited to the area that's available on the site right now, so without encroaching on the playing fields, or the play space, or the wooded area that potentially would need to be purchased to, to do such an expansion. Also adding population to Hillside, further complicating the parking and bus drop-off and pickup that's already experienced as very congested. The fact that there are limited support spaces for, to accommodate fifth grade, and the fact that in the last bond, Hillside was really brought up to standard, and that the school felt strongly that that not be compromised. The option of adding classrooms in the courtyard has been floated as a question in lieu of the cafeteria addition. And so we didn't really study classrooms in the courtyard, because classrooms are needed for the middle school. And so infilling the courtyard with Farragut Middle School classrooms would push the middle school into the high school footprint and really further complicate a ready convoluted circulation. The courtyard also is, the infill is better suited for a wide-span room leading to the outdoors, right, leading through underneath the, the bridge into the play yard. Due to windows that are required for classrooms, a classroom addition would really need to be a single-loaded corridor and classrooms along the exterior, so it, it wouldn't really make full use of the available space to be captured for the courtyard inflow. I think we looked at it, and only, only about four classrooms really could fit, could fit as max as well, and just taking a brief look. So locating classrooms in the heart of the building while leaving the cafeteria on the third floor of the middle school wing, we really also felt was a short-sighted solution. Again, kind of going back to, our approach was first understanding the problems, taking a long-term approach about how all of those, how we can set, set Hastings up for success for the future, and this project being Phase 1 in this bond is really unlocking that.
No, we don't accept questions live, but we have a public comment coming up right after the presentation.
Why the cafeteria was recommended in lieu of the Washington wing? I spoke to this earlier, so I'm just going to skip over that one. Building over the saddle area where the high school wing ends and before the Cochrane Gym begins, we didn't study that really because it's an extension off of the high school and there are needed spaces really at the middle school. The addition off the high school wing before the Cochrane Gym also wouldn't provide any of the needed, amount of space needed for the middle school. Investigating a fourth story to the Washington wing. We also didn't study that based on the fact that building an addition over the existing wing really would be substantially more expensive than a ground-supported addition. The design team really would need a lot more information to be able to study that structural analysis, geotech report, to truly be able to evaluate feasibility and cost, but typically that would be the case. And then accessing classroom space above a shared cafeteria space is also not really ideal for circulation. Another question, have we investigated moving the library up to a repurposed middle school auditorium and then reclaiming the library space for classrooms? This was an interesting proposition, but really would require renovation of two spaces without gaining significant floor area for the building that we, we know is needed. I mean, our space analysis that we did, you know, generating that 28% of the program area for the middle school included the middle school auditorium in that 28%. So even with that area, we're still looking at a very tight middle school space. The auditorium, although it could be better utilized, is a complex conversion for new library space. It currently has a sloped floor. It doesn't have any windows. It's slightly less floor area than the current library space, so really would be a downgrade to the existing library unless there was really significant building envelope work done to provide adequate light. There would also need to be a structural analysis of the floor loading capacity to determine if it could accommodate that, the load of, deadload of books and stacks. We also felt like the library was an appropriate location accessible off of the hallways between the school. I think something that was interesting in our findings was, the library's a loved space, you know, as much as it, it could also use an upgrade or refresh, it's, it was really expressed as kind of a loved space in the building, because it is something that's ideally located right now. And the library space already has a classroom breakout, resource rooms, and offices on that floor, so the conversion to moving it up and infilling with classrooms really only net a gain of about three to four classrooms, while the program area that's gained in the cafeteria conversion and reclamation of the third-floor Washington wing is much larger, and five classrooms plus lockers plus breakout room, and so really achieves much more for the building as a whole. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Matt.
Thank you, Rena.
Sure.
Can we do a deeper dive into how we might schedule the use of one turf field? Look, having an extra, having a synthetic turf field just increases the amount of playable hours that the school district has at their disposal to, to schedule their sports. So in terms, anytime we add a synthetic turf field to a school district, it creates a scheduling opportunity, or sometimes some consider it a challenge. Most athletic directors are, enjoy the challenge of rescheduling their games with an expanded playing schedule with extended, extended hours, and it really alleviates some of the challenges they experience that are related to weather or darkness, and provides a uniform, safe, playable surface late into the hours, into the evening, which you do not currently have and would be a huge asset to the community. So this gets back into the cost-benefit analysis, and I'm not going to get into too great a detail here, but essentially, the school district invests $25,000 to $30,000 per year, and from what we understand, that's a handcuffed budget. Really, there needs to be more, more maintenance, perhaps a sod or grass replacement every five years. And so when you consider the cost analysis, we have to look at what the school district currently is able to do, what would be necessary to do to bring it up to playable standards, and what would be necessary to continue maintaining that surface over multiple years, and then compare that to synthetic turf, which is a process we're undergoing now. But I don't know if I'm going to get into all the detail of these answers, so a, a lot of these questions were posed to us from, from the school district directly, and I believe are more for the, for the benefit of the community to be able to read at your own leisure. I really don't think it would be a beneficial use of, of everybody's time here for me to go ahead and read everything. So Alex, unless there's something specific you want me to stop on, I think we've covered most of the topics. I would only add one thing, and that is that it is very unusual for land to partner with another architectural firm working for a school district. It's rare. I can't think of an instance in my 20 years where we were encouraged to do that. And so when we were invited to provide our services or offer our services to the school district, we were informed that they had a firm currently working for them by the name of PBDW, and Rena, who has gone through the Hastings School District as a student, has lived as a resident here, we've come to a real... lived as a resident here, we've come to really appreciate PBDW's expertise. When we started the project, a lot of the things that they did through their approach, through their process, would have been the way that we would have handled it, but it would have taken us, quite honestly, a lot longer. I have to admit, they're very good with their process, and in the process of us analyzing the building separately and independently, we feel that their solutions and their approach and their recommendations are the most appropriate for the school district. So I, I don't wanna get into too much of the lengthy answers, Alex. Again, if you wanna steer me, I'm happy to answer anything else.
I think that initially, we're gonna open up for questions from trustee.
No, I'll be efficient, because I really want the board to get engaged, and obviously we have some very interested community here. But let me just underscore what Matt said. This is my third district leading where there's been major capital work, and we, there's a good reason, in state of Connecticut, New York State, RFPs are required. We cannot hire, the board does it, we cannot bring to the board a recommended firm unless they've gone through a competitive RFP process. LAN was competing about seven or eight firms at that point. It was a tough compete, they won that race. Previously, PBDW had competed, before that, another firm had competed. So we've had three firms through competition, looking, I've been here going on four years, so at least the last three years, Marines led a process where we've had external groups studying what is needed. The comprehensive process that Rena referred to, I've been told was the first time in any recent memory where the entire faculty and staff had an opportunity with students to give input in a conference of way, and that predates any of the ideas you're seeing up here, any ideas. And this is all in the public record, those conference reports, faculty, staff, students speaking about what is needed. So we have worked very thoroughly to bring forward with very careful analysis, technical, mechanical, engineering, and human, students, staff, and others about what is needed here. And that's where we arrived to this solution. But I wanna stress, there's almost a little bit of a peer review going on here within. You've got Matt and his firm, who don't wanna fail, working with another firm who has an immense success at particularly historic renovation in New York with lots of educational facilities, PBDW, also not wanting to fail, figuring out how to work together. So I wanna assure the board that we have been, with experts, very, very thorough, and we're constantly cross-checking. That work then led to what you see here, and we continue to scrub it, review it, bring in all kinds of analysis, so when you decide tonight if to go to that environmental review, which is that final analytical step, which in a community like Hastings matters, is it environmentally sound, you then will have that much more knowledge and be confident when you go to actually decide on whether you should go to a bond referendum, what to do. But I want you as a board to understand, now going on almost three years, almost done, we have been exquisitely thorough, and I bring that out of experience in two other districts where this work is expensive, vital, and necessary.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I just wanna add to that and also kind of answer the question about setting up Hastings for success. I mean, I think the fact that we went through some interviews, or extensive interviews, and heard that, wow, this is the first time any of us have been asked any of these questions, really highlighted the need for this type of study, also alongside the strategic plan that Hastings just underwent with portrait of a Hastings learner. And so our, our exercise was really to bring the facilities up to a standard that would support Hastings' strategic goals. And so that's really what we are looking to do in addressing success, is to bring the facilities up to that standard to support Hastings' strategic goals. And, and also, and, you know, more specifically, then, address some of the really high-level needs that were expressed as a result of trying to align the, the building with the strategic goals.
Thank you, thank you. So I'm gonna open up for trustee questions or comments.
I just wanted to thank you and thanks the district. We've asked many, many questions along this journey, and I really appreciate the seriousness that you've responded to all of them, and I, and I found this step very helpful. So if people have the time, I recommend scrolling through the whole thing, because there are lots of really important questions answered, also just about the focus of teaching and learning, and, and how we're doing our, our best work here, so it's one of the things that you can thank you.
Our pleasure.
Yeah. Matt, if you could speak to the state law about PFAS, we've received a lot of questions from the community about that being outlawed. Can you just speak to that, because we have a lot of community members here that inquired?
Yeah, the PFAS product is used to coat the synthetic turf filaments. They are phasing out the usage of that product. There's been a lot of regulations related to PFAS entering the water stream. So of course, you know, New York State wants to remove that product from the manufacturing process, remove that, that material, that, that application. And so the turf manufacturers are aware that there's a sunset period, and they have taken PFAS out of the manufacturing line, and I would assume that orders they're fulfilling now may perhaps still have that, but orders that they fulfill in the future will have that chemical removed. So by the time this project, and quite honestly, probably in the next six months, that PFAS chemical application to improve the filament of the synthetic turf will be removed from the manufacturing product line. And that will not be in the synthetic turf that the school district, if this project goes forward, constructs on the Burka State.
So it's safe to say that if, if we move forward with a synthetic, synthetic field, that it will be PFAS-free?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, David. Questions, concerns?
No, I, I just wanted to also say thank you, for those who've been following it. You've been very flexible, good listeners. I, I think you did a great analysis of not just the space usage, the function, the flow, but you really listened to all the stakeholders, you adjusted down, which I think was a concern in a lot of different areas, and I appreciate all the details on, on the questions. So, so thank you all for your work on that.
Of course.
I would second that. I'm thinking that.
Show to your mic.
Oh, the mic, the mic, yeah.
I didn't really wanna talk.
We wanna hear you, Joe.
I, I second what you said, Maureen, and I wanna thank you both, and I was gonna say, for, even for people who are here in the audience, that Rena, I just wanted to, and I was gonna say that you were, you were a product of Hastings, and whether people here agree with the bond or don't agree, I think we would all agree that you really do us proud. So it's...
Yeah.
My question, I'm not sure if this is a fair question, or maybe it's more, more in, I'm not sure, but in the, on the budget, for the buildings, for the middle school project, for the MEP systems, it was $4 million, and then similarly, I think at Hillside, it's $3 million.
Yeah.
Could you just explain why that costs $4 million?
Well, Matt can go in there, I mean, those line items are combined, but my, Matt, a lot of it has to do with the mechanical ventilation that is lacking in the building.
Yeah, mechanical ventilation, so the, in 2011, 2012, the International Building Code of, as adopted by New York State, requires mechanical ventilation in corridors and some of the other spaces that, quite honestly, this building and Hillside don't have. So whereas the building was constructed to meet code at the time, code is constantly adopted to become more conservative, to respond to health and safety and wellness issues, and so indoor air quality and ventilation requirements have emerged into becoming, you know, a hot button topic, more so past 2012 when we reached the COVID period where ventilation was, you know, absolutely necessary. So that's a big part of the $4 million line item, but that $4 million represents five, six projects in, in and of itself. So to isolate it and just say, why is it gonna cost $4 million, there's, if you divided that by each one of those line items, it's a million dollars apiece, and, and they all do take a lot of work. We're talking about taking down ceilings, putting ventilation in, putting ceilings back up, that can be quite exhaustive and costly.
Thank you, Joe.
And potentially abatements, where we may find them.
Yeah, we, we will test for hazardous materials, we will find if there's asbestos or any other hazardous materials, and if it's necessary to do an abatement project, that of course would be considered part of the project in order to install the ventilation equipment.
Can I ask you a question? Is that okay?
Joe, or me?
You, or me. While everyone is here, and because not everyone saw your presentation last week, can you just reiterate the annual, I'm, I bet you know the number. On a million-dollar home in Hastings, what is the, what is the foreseeable tax increase with this bond?
So currently, based upon the scope of work at, you know, somewhere between that $45 to $46 million range, we're estimating on a 20-year borrowing, the impact would be about $800 for the average assessed home, which currently in Hastings is close to $1.1 million.
So if your house is worth less, you...
You pay less, if it's worth more, you pay more, yes. I mean, the other thing we did discuss, and although that would absolutely be the impact, when, you know, people say, what is this actually translating to, we also do know, we just discussed briefly about, again, just coincidentally, that there is going to be some new tax revenue that will likely align with when this debt becomes, when the community has to start paying back on this, based upon the timeline Matt had provided, the debt, the first debt payment for homeowners would be in the 20, I believe, the 2029 school year. So, and then there's, I'm sorry, the Electric Owl Studios, which we anticipate will be up and, you know, built at that time, brings in actually an estimated revenue to the school district of $2 million, which would more or less offset this debt in its entirety.
Yeah, can I, can I follow on that? Because I was thinking, you know, we'll have more data on that, but basically, if you look at the, the tax trajectory that Hastings is on, by the time, this new bond, the first payment that taxpayers would make on it would be in 2029. At that time, the old bond would roll off...
In '31.
Two years later, I'm sorry, and the revenue from Electric Owl would be coming on. The Electric, the Electric Owl revenue, if you look at it as a percentage of the average taxpayer's tax bill, 1% of that bill would roll off as old debt in 2031, but about 3% new revenue would come in from Electric Owl. So, and the, even at the higher end of the bond, we're considering, I think we said it's about a 3%, 3.8% increase in taxes. So while the bond would have to be paid, an average household $60 a month, that cost would be offset by an equivalent, if not larger, drop in the lower debt load and increased revenue from Electric Owl, which does not send any, any children to the school district. So overall, nominally, we're paying for the bond, but the, the tax trajectory of this village would not have any increase, it would be the same basic slope, just to be clear.
Do we have that in a graph?
We're working on that, right? We have somebody...
We're gonna have Alex, I got some pictures of his hand.
There's somebody, we're, you know, we're gonna have that information, you know, more, more gamed out, but I just wanted to sort of give the headline on it. Anything else to add to that, or?
Um, no, I mean, I think that was answering the basic question there, and then of course we have the bond, the $18 million bond, but I think we have to be realistic to think there will be a time in which there will need to be other repairs done to the building. I think the first bond that you noted, Alex, would be, you know, that in fact would reduce the 1%, but I think the $18 million bond, which will then be fully paid off about five years after that, you know, I would anticipate at that time, the district will need to do some other work, you know, to the facility at that time, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other, of course, no, of course.
This is a really helpful conversation, because I think, I think I'm pretty loud. Because I think we're all very concerned about being proper fiscal stewards of the community, but we also have to be stewards of the educational environment and the experience of our students, and I guess one of the things I've been curious about, especially in light of last week's, not enterprise, dispatch headlines, is when we look at our neighboring communities, what kind of investments have they been doing into their schools over the past, I don't know, 10 years compared to us? Because I'm kind of curious, because when you, when you, hear you speak, there's, um, there's so much that needs to be done, and I'm just wondering, knowing that we've been a district that's had a fair amount of upheaval in terms of leadership, and now we've had stable leadership, so we can do this kind of work and do research on our schools and the needs, like, how does that bear out in terms of our bond work compared to other districts?
So, so I would say that it's, I look at things over maybe a 25-year period, and the reason for that is because if, as an example, if Dows Ferry did a bond 20, you know, a substantial bond 20 years ago or so, of course, then, you know, over the last 10 years, they may have needed to do less. So when I think back, the last bond, of course, was 2018, and that was the $18 million bond in which the majority of that bond, of course, addressed the Hillside addition, that was one part of it, there was, you know, other work that was also roofing and all the rest and things like that, roofing, a new boiler, sometimes we forget there's all these other things that were there also, but it replaced the boiler of this building and all the rest. Prior to that, in 2013, there was the $8 million bond that was, at that time primarily, we redid the Reynolds Field and the track and the fields there, as well as the conversion and the upgrades that exist today at Burka State, as well as high school auditorium and some other work. But really, and the reason I bring you back to those two, prior to that, it was really in the 1996 is when we did a bond prior to that. So I say that it's not so much, you know, those two bonds are, you know, we're progressing, and those two bonds were well-needed at that time, but there was a long period of time between 96 and 2013, and that's really, that, those years are where typically we would have done a bond maybe every five to seven years. That, that's not only us, that's most districts are in that kind of planning phase, five to seven years, you see districts put up, a lot of times people try to align it with when they have existing debt falling off, they're, they're kind of in, in process of planning, and of course, when we were planning prior to 2013 to do a bond, it was 2007 is when we began, of course, 2008, we know what happened, you know, the, the economy and all the rest, so we delayed a lot of work. So I say that to say, some districts had gotten bonds on, on the street in 2006 and prior to that, so as we look around at our colleagues, I mean, the, in the River towns, we know, Ardsley last year in May, I think it was a 60, Alex, you may know the exact one, it was like a $65 million bond they passed, and even prior to that, they've done, you know, a lot more work now.
You're doing like a schedule.
But in fairness, Ardsley, as we all know, has had a lot of condos built and all the rest, so I think, you know, them doing probably well over $100 million in the last 10 to 15 years is a bit different, because they've also had an enrollment surge there, but, but then, Hill, I know for Dows Ferry as an example, they did 18, a little bit higher than 18 million, the exact same year we did our bond, but they had done some larger bonds previous to that. Irvington similarly did an 18 or 20 million dollar bond the last time we did a bond, they're in a plant, they're both in planning process for bringing out other bonds, I don't know where they'll land, but they've also issued substantial bonds, you know, in the last 20 years prior to that bond being issued. We also know that Edgemont just passed a 60, 62 million dollar bond this past year, so again, I'm just trying to use districts that I would say are closer in size to Hastings. I think every school, I mean, the fact of the matter is, there's infrastructure, there are old buildings, we're Lower Westchester, and we have to do an investment, there are things that we're gonna have to invest in, so, and, and of course, coupled with the fact that we've, you know, some of the enrollment, which unlike Edgemont, I think I reported at the last meeting, they're experiencing, I think, a 10 or 15% decline in their enrollment over the last four or five years, and even with that, they're still adding space to their buildings, because even with the declining enrollment, they found themselves outgrowing their space. So the things we're dealing with here are not unique to Hastings, and, and I definitely can put something together that's a little bit more comprehensive than what I just said, but I do think it's best to kind of look over a 25-year period, because I think that's, it's a better, you know, indication, you know, of bonding.
It's a great question, and in a sense, we'll add it into the FAQ and have it there. I think for like districts, the most immediate ones, while the taxes are high, they are lower than the neighboring districts, and we've been going in Hastings for bonds far less frequently, and I think that's starting to catch up with us. As great as the district is, I think the things that LAN has come upon, and very thoroughly, and they're the second firm to do that, is, again, we work really hard to keep the building clean, safe, and neat, but there are things that have caught up on us, and we can come back to...
Our taxes are lower than other districts.
If you look at, what I was sharing in the last meeting...
The mill rate, yeah.
The mill is, is marginally lower, yes, I know, understand that people, and I, we're highly respectful of taxpayers here, we know that, that is the source of the revenue for a district like this, and though we've, prior to my getting here, gone out very rarely for bonds compared to like districts, and at lower levels. Final comment, compliment for PMBW, anyone who goes up to Hillside, thank you Hastings for the wisdom in passing that bond, because that's been a, a change to that building in terms of educational quality, safety, and all the rest, and it's truly one of the finest elementary schools you can walk into, and, and I, that's a factual statement from my, my history in this work, and, but the, the design there mattered, and it's a wonderful place. Families in that multipurpose room, when they all are there, meeting and celebrating and honoring the students, they love it, and I do know some say to me, hmm, now I'm headed to Farragut. So this is what we're trying to address.
It's, I mean, it's ancient history at this point, but it is interesting history, you know, when industry shut down in this, in this village, Anaconda and Zinzer, throughout the 70s, and completely decimated, I believe at the time, I remember looking at the numbers, it was 35% of the school budget was paid by those two industries. When they shut down, the village was on its own. When those things happen nowadays... When those things happen nowadays, like at Indian Point, or when the, the Glenhead Con Edison Generator shut down, had the same size impact on cold spraying and Glenhead School District. The state stepped in with a plan to help mitigate, over many, many years, the financial impact. I, I'm not familiar with what happened in Hastings, but with the little I know, there was no plan, there was no help. So a lot of the, you know, the youngest building that we have here, educationally, is 1931. The oldest is 1902. So a lot of the things that we're living with are things that were not able to be financially addressed, because there wasn't the base in this village for a long time. And this district got down to 990 students in the mid 90s. So, you know, we're kind of, we're, we're still living with the effects of that to a certain extent. So, good with that. Any other questions or comments from trustees?
I think it's time for public comment.
Okay. Matt, Rena, are you guys gonna hang out, or? Yes, okay. So I'd like to open up for public comment, please, respect, we have a three-minute limit. There'll be, are you gonna do it on your phone? Okay. There'll be that familiar sound from Law &amp; Order playing.
That Melissa getting text messages.
Okay. You have a list, though, right?
Yeah, she does.
Okay.
Emmy Rosenberg.
Okay. Al, would you help her with the mic? Just by. Welcome. Hi, how are you?
Hi, my name is Emmy Rosenberg, and I'm a third grader at Hillside. I play softball, soccer, and basketball. There are holes everywhere at the varsity softball field, because middle school soccer used it in the fall. Me and my friend Luna are afraid we might fall, because my softball team also practices at the field. My sister is in high school, and she also plays softball. I've been to her travel team games, and they have turf and lights, and that's how they play in the dark. We can't have home games in the dark because of how our field is. I play soccer too, and when I play, I played in the fall, we had lights, and we played until 7:30. We could still see because we had lights. We really need turf and lights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Pan.
Welcome.
Hi there. All right. So I'm Diana Pan, I reside at 8 Prescott, and I want to start by thanking the board for your tireless advocacy on behalf of Hastings students. I can only imagine the expectations to consider the many stakeholders in this community, and I want to also thank the community members who understand the value and importance of a younger population. I'm speaking today as a parent to a third grader whom you just saw, and an 11th grader, both softball players, and also as a softball coach. Over the past seven years as a Little League softball coach, I've had the privilege of working with many of the village's youth. I often say that softball is just a big playdate for the younger sets. The kids are outside, they're away from screens, they're interacting with their peers while learning sport-specific techniques, but also important life skills, such as teamwork, becoming leaders, instilling confidence. As a coach, I've also had the joys of navigating rainouts, negotiating with opposing coaches, and scheduling, and we're all volunteers, by the way, we all have day jobs, and securing our limited natural turf fields for makeup games. This past spring was especially onerous, as we had to cancel numerous practices and could find and not find time for weather cooperation, et cetera, to make up some of our games. There is no wrath like the disappointment of the dozen-plus eight-year-olds ready to play, and are then frustrated that the fields are not playable even days after the rain had ended. It appears a jury may be out on the safety of synthetic turf materials. We've been having this conversation. But what I do know is that the current state of the varsity softball field is not safe for our students. Go walk around the field and see for yourselves if you haven't. The outfield is dotted with holes of all sizes, and the infield can be hard as a rock or a mud pit, depending on the day and weather conditions preceding it. This is natural turf shared with community members, like Little League. The limited natural lighting also means that we cannot start games after a certain time, or that games are called, and you've heard the children say this over and over again. More wrath of disappointed softball players, but really, they're all delightful and love playing the game. What we know is that change is the only constant in society. We also know, based on scores of research, that a vibrant school community is a good thing for its residents. I'd encourage neighbors to attend the school functions, go to the impressive plays, cheer on the sports teams, at home and in other districts, to compare and contrast buildings and fields, so you can collect your own empirical data. And if you haven't yet, talk to the current Hastings kids. I know some, some of you have a lull, but talk to the current Hastings kids and understand what they need to be proud ambassadors of our village. Thank you.
Thank you.
Siri Rosenberg.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Siri Rosenberg, and I'm a junior here. To start, I'd like to thank the board for hearing what Lola and I said last time, but I'd especially like to thank Alex for taking the time to visit the softball field and understand our concerns firsthand. It really shows that the board is committed to showing, to supporting our athletes and addressing equity concerns. I'd also like to briefly address what appears to be a little bit of a misconception about softball and turf fields. Having played on three high-level softball travel teams over the course of the past four years, I can confidently say that turf fields are the standard for high-level and competitive play. Just this past fall, I played on synthetic turf fields for over half of my tournaments. Turf fields aren't just a luxury, they help, they help prevent injuries, allow us to avoid weather cancellations, and give teams the opportunities to stretch out games without worrying about field conditions. At the end of the day, a turf field is going to drain better than a dirt field, even if that dirt field has a drainage system. By not upgrading to turf, we're not preparing our athletes to compete at higher levels. Other schools and programs are moving forward, and without turf, Hastings is being left behind. I'd also like to highlight the importance of lights on the softball field and baseball. Right now, our practices and games are limited by daylight. Last year, we had to end some games early because it got too dark to continue. Not only is that frustrating, but our team loses time to both compete and improve. Lights would solve this problem, giving us the, the flexibility to play and practice in the evening. Lights also bring people together. Evening games create a better atmosphere, drawing more parents, classmates, and community members who might not be able to attend games during the day. Then in closing, I just, again, want to thank the board for putting softball back on the agenda. It's a step in the right direction, but to truly give our program, our sports programs the tools to succeed, we need to invest in turf and lights. Turf makes the games safer and more consistent, and lights give us time, they give us the time we need to grow and succeed while creating opportunities for the, for the community to rally and support our team. In the end, this isn't just about lights and turf, it's about giving all of our athletic teams the chance to compete, grow, and proudly represent Hastings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lola Norlander.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Lola, and for anyone who doesn't know, I'm a junior and the starting catcher for the varsity softball team. I am grateful to all the board members for hearing Siri and I, and for, and for putting softball back in the plans. I did, though, want to speak again about the importance of having turf fields and, and the benefits. The material used for turf is much better due to its durability, plus we can have extended playtime. Having a turf field allows us to play at a more competitive level, just like Siri said, and during my school season and travel season, many of the other teams and/or tournaments I have attended play on a turf, on a turf field. In my years playing both school and travel softball, I've experienced firsthand the difference between turf and dirt. With dirt, we constantly deal with ruts, divots, and uneven surfaces that increase the risk of injury, like rolled ankles, bad hops, and scraped knees are common. Our field dirt is so dry and dead that a ground ball last season hit a dead spot and went straight into our second baseman's eye, and she was out for a few weeks. Turf would eliminate that, and turf would also give us a playing surface that is consistent. Therefore, we should be able to focus on the game instead of worrying about the field conditions. We also believe that having lights on the field would strongly benefit our athletic teams, allowing us to practice for longer periods of time and ensuring that we can complete our games. Last season, we were forced to end one of our games early because it got too dark, but having lights would have allowed us to complete it. Having lights on our field would also expand our play options, allowing us to schedule evening games, which would attract more community, community support to our games. And we believe that softball and baseball, for that matter, deserve to have a turf field just like everyone else. Our team is determined to stay competitive, work harder, get better, and win. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Gagliardi.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is Christina Gagliardi, and I am speaking to you today from multiple perspectives. I am a Hastings High School teacher, I am the girls' varsity field hockey coach, I'm a former Hastings student athlete, and I am a Hastings taxpayer. The priority that unifies all of these perspectives for me is student safety. And I'm gonna ask you, if you can, to go to the slide with the athletic fields.
Who has a clicker?
Oh, oh, I had it. I couldn't find that. Sorry. So as a field hockey coach, I do everything I can to ensure my players are safe. By force, I face many challenges, starting with our current field. And I would like to let you all know, my current field is number one. Okay? With this proposal of just one turf field, I will still be playing, my, my athletes will still be playing majority of the time at one. And one faces a lot of problems. Okay? If you can see, that is the baseball field. So we share, part of our field is in the infield of the baseball field. So we have unevenness and dirt in our field. The baseball field was renovated a couple years ago, and that renovation caused more unevenness for the field hockey field and poorer draining situations. It also caused the bases to be very close to our sidelines, which refs have told me is very dangerous. If you also see in that image, there's a little dirt patch in the right field. Okay? That was formed from a sinkhole last year. A sinkhole that luckily opened up when none of these student athletes were on the field. That sinkhole required tons of gravel in it to then be playable again. That sinkhole is caused by tree trunks decaying in our field, and the tree trunks were placed in that field many, many years ago when they created this field, as just fill. Okay? I am terrified, thinking that there are more trees in that field, and my players could be playing on that field when another sinkhole opens up. Now, with the one turf, it's a great idea, I love it, but it's gonna cause major issues sharing 11, or sharing that one field with 11 teams. I have to highlight the fact that field hockey is a completely different sport on turf. One of my players said, it's like playing soccer on ice. And it really is. There have been some games that we play really good teams on turf, and I have to tell my players, be safe, I don't care what the score is. Okay? And we usually get several injuries from that. I understand this, this is a lot of money, but as a taxpayer, I would really hope that other people, as well as myself, are willing to pay this through taxes through many years to ensure that these athletes and our community are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Michelle Vavoda.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Michelle Vavoda, and I live in Hastings, 70 Flower Avenue. I also want to thank you all for the hard work on this bond that you've done, and thank you to the firms who have done such a careful analysis of our village's needs. I wrote this before I saw that the softball fields had been added in, and also that it was a grass field. So just bear with me, some of it still applies. I'm speaking as the parent of two middle schoolers who play softball and baseball, and as a volunteer assistant coach with Hastings Little League. And I'm here to speak again about the importance of including a softball field for female athletes in the bond. In addition to creating a more equitable sports program for our schools, it would provide an additional location for all of the village's softball athletes, from Hastings Little League up through modified JV and varsity softball, to practice and play games, as currently all four programs share the field at Hillside. The positivity of playing fields for softball athletes in Hastings means that practices have to be cut short, moved, or canceled, and games often have to be relocated or ended early. The addition of a turf field and lights would mean that games that run late, especially in early spring and late fall, could continue to be played, and that athletes and coaches wouldn't have to worry about the conditions of fields after long stretches of rain. It is important for the community to understand that unlike a soccer game or a basketball game, softball and baseball games can go long, for over two hours, even, you know, beyond that, and without lights, our games may need to end early. I've heard a lot of concerns about the safety of turf and its potential impact on children's health, and while I don't know much about that, I do know that grass and dirt fields come with their own health risks. Athletes tend to get injured due to the poor field conditions that plague our dirt fields. Long stretches of rain drench the fields, and the tarps that the coaches dutifully place over the pitcher's mound and home plate in between games are no match for the rains brought on by climate change. It is indeed frustrating that after a day or two of rain, when the sun comes out and games are scheduled, those games often have to be canceled after coaches visit the fields and determine they're unplayable. While kids who have access to turf fields in other towns are able to get their games in and reap the health benefits of being outside, socializing, exercising, and being in the sunshine, our kids can't play because their dirt fields are unsafely muddy and covered in puddles. I don't think the community knows the extent to which coaches, many of whom volunteer, have to work overtime to manage field conditions and make decisions about whether or not it's safe to play. Having turf removes that factor. In addition, it's simply unacceptable that there are so few softball fields in this community. Adding another field, one that is always playable and that has lights, could not only meet the needs of this village, but could draw both youth and adult leagues from outside of Hastings who would pay to rent the fields, and then probably go into our village to grab a bite after. As I said last time I spoke, we need to listen to the athletes, coaches, and parent volunteers on this one. They are the ones intimately involved in youth sports in the district, and they know what our sports programs need. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Harlow Norlander.
That's my sister, I'm just gonna speak for her, she had basketball. So she says, hello, my name is Harlow Norlander, and I'm in fifth grade. I've been playing softball since I was in T-ball, and I intend to play for the high school when I'm older. I am a catcher, just like my sister, following in her footsteps. I think that, I think the softball teams should be able to play at Burke. I also believe that they should be able to play on turf fields. Turf fields are much easier to play on, because you do not have to worry about muddy infield and wet grass. It is better to play on turf fields, so that you don't have to cancel so many games and practices due to bad weather. Cancelled games that can't be rescheduled actually decrease the team's overall rankings. This could cause colleges to not want to come see the players because of the low ranking. I would very much like to use my high school athletic career as a way to play on the college level, and I ask that you give me the best chance possible. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Suzanne and Sam Feldman.
Well, you know what, I'm gonna say one thing. I'm totally conflicted.
Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
I think so much, well, I'm, I'm not Susan Feldman, I'm Sam Feldman. Ten Circle Drive for many years. So I think so much of what has been recommended sounds great, and I'm just gonna say, personally as a senior who sees the taxes going like this, and the money ain't coming in the way it used to, it's so hard to keep living in Hastings, right? Pretty much everybody we know from all the years we were here, they're gone. They're like, hey, your kid grad, you know, graduated 25 years ago, what are you doing here? With the taxes going crazy? We love it, we wanna stay in Hastings. I have no idea what the answer is, but it is, you wanna keep some seniors in Hastings, right? We don't want everybody to be in their 30s and 40s with the Tesla in the garage. I mean, we have to have some diversity. That's all, I, I don't know the answer, but that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Guy Owen.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Guy Owen, and I've lived in Hastings on Burnside Drive for 21 years. My two sons went through Hastings schools with great results. They were athletes. I supported a turf field 10 years ago, and I support it now. I support better athletic facilities. I support lights, but all in the right place and with the right planning with the community. Last week, every single resident of Burnside Drive signed a letter expressing their concerns about the athletic field plans that few of them knew much about until two weeks ago. The letter reads... So I think so much of what has been recommended sounds great. And I'm just going to say, personally, as a senior who sees the taxes going like this and the money ain't coming in the way it used to, it's so hard to keep living in Hastings, right? Pretty much everybody we know from all the years we were here, they're gone. They're like, "Hey, your kid graduated 25 years ago. What are you doing here with the taxes going crazy? We love it. We want to stay in Hastings." I have no idea what the answer is, but it is, you want to keep some seniors in Hastings, right? We don't want everybody to be in their 30s and 40s with the Tesla in the garage. I mean, we have to have some diversity. That's all. I don't know the answer. But that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Guy Owen and I've lived in Hastings on Burnside Drive for 21 years. My two sons went through Hastings schools with great results. They were athletes. I supported a turf field 10 years ago and I support it now. I support better athletic facilities. I support lights. But all in the right place and with the right planning with the community. Last week, every single resident of Burnside Drive signed a letter expressing their concerns about the athletic field plans that few of them knew much about until two weeks ago. The letter reads, "The plan for renovating the fields contained not one word about the impact of the changes on the homeowners nearest to the new fields. The changes will include bright lights on many, if not most, in-season nights, amplified sound and crowd noises, and greatly increased parking on Burnside Drive with people crossing private properties to get to the fields. The effects of the changes will be diminished quality of life, reduced property values, and blockage of Burnside Drive to normal traffic, including emergency vehicles. We insist that the board take our concerns seriously and discuss with us how these negative proposed changes could be mitigated." The board has given no direct response to this letter. In its FAQs, it has addressed some of the lighting issues without any opportunity for questions about the lighting. There was more detail tonight, but you know, I find it hard to believe that a fully lit lacrosse game is going to have the minimal impact that was described. Otherwise, the board has totally ignored residents' concerns about amplified sound and traffic lasting into many evenings. Will there be loud amplified music and announcements on top of crowd noise? Will the fields be rented out on weekend evenings for non-school games? Burnside Drive is a long, dead-end street, two lanes wide. People going to Burke Estate games park on one side, leaving one lane for travel. With the added traffic, when they find there's no parking at the top of the street, they'll drive back down, and if they meet just one car coming up, it's gridlock. Residents can't get home. An ambulance would not be able to get through. During the last presentation, it was glibly said that Hastings residents like to walk. Irvington residents are not going to walk to a soccer game in Hastings. There's not enough parking. You've added 30 spots, but many more games at a time when many more parents are going to be able to drive to games. Many people leave Hastings right after the kids graduate to avoid the high taxes. But many of us stay because we love it here and we continue to support the schools. Almost every resident of Burnside Drive has kids in the schools or kids who went through the schools. They're not selfish or unreasonable. But the board acts like the broader community is just an obstacle to be managed or ignored. This project, which feels rushed through, has a lot of problems. With the plan for the fields, you've managed needlessly to turn an entire schools-friendly neighborhood into passionate opponents of the bond. And with the cost of the project and other issues, the lack of consideration of the broader community means that it may well fail in May and the schools will be set back for years to come, which none of us wants.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Mara Ayuso. I'm a resident of Hastings. My 10th grade daughter plays varsity field hockey. It's her passion and she wants to continue to play after high school. I sent a letter to the board on Friday with 36 signatures from the field hockey community. I'm here today to reiterate that message regarding the athletic bond proposal. As of last week, the board was focused on a renovation plan at Burke Estate that included only one artificial turf field. This is insufficient to meet the needs of our athletic programs. Relying on a single field will lead to scheduling conflicts, limited access, and inequitable usage for many teams. Consider our fall field sports, which includes field hockey, girls soccer, boys soccer, and football. There are 11 teams in total, all needing to practice and play games. Even with lights, one turf field can't meet the needs of all of these teams. For the past four years, I've seen our field hockey teams face significant challenges. All three field hockey teams share an uneven grass field at Burke Estate that's intersected, as you've heard, in one corner by the dirt baseball infield. It's the worst of the grass fields. It's difficult to maintain, doesn't drain well, and has resulted in injuries. This is not the environment where our athletes can do their best. As parents, we see how dedicated and hardworking these players are. They need a consistent, stable playing surface to improve and succeed. Right now, Hastings is one of the few schools in the region where field hockey is still played on grass. Artificial turf is the standard at the club and collegiate level. Playing on turf provides smoother or predictable passes, faster gameplay, and requires a different set of skills that grass simply can't replicate. Without continuous use of a turf field, our field hockey team is at a clear disadvantage, unable to train effectively for high-level competition. I strongly urge the board to consider this proposal in support of more than one turf field. The time and resources spent on this initiative should reflect the true needs of our athletic programs and our community as a whole. I know I've spoken mostly about field hockey tonight, a little biased, but it's really not just about this one sport. It's about creating a fair, equitable, and supportive environment for all of our student athletes. Thank you for your time and attention to this important matter. We hope you will take the necessary steps to make this vision a reality for our teams and our school community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, Board. My name is Celia Ayuso and I'm a 10th grader at Hastings High School. I'm here to speak to you regarding the previous plan for turf installation at the Burke Estate. I have played field hockey here in Hastings for four years, from intramurals to modified to varsity, and I can confidently say that we don't have equal opportunities for playing sports outside. As you have seen the astonishing list of school districts in our division that have turf fields, I can tell you one thing: We need to be on that list. Our athletes need us to be on that list. At Hastings, I know I speak for everyone, I say, "Our teams are like our family." My field hockey team starts every game off by saying "family" on three because we truly are connected. But if we don't have that bond because students are losing faith in their fields and resources, then the family is no more. One turf field isn't enough for all the fall and spring sports we have to offer. We need more spaces for practices and games to hone our skills and get better as players. In total, we have 11 teams practicing on Hastings' fields in the fall, and that is just too much for one field to handle. If we're going to make this plan a reality and put in artificial turf for all of the community to enjoy, we need to do it right and have more than one field for multiple teams and Hastings residents to use. Due to extreme weather conditions last year, my team was forced to cancel practices and postpone games due to massive rain and flooding of our field. Not only that, but this year, our field was dry and the grass was slowly dying due to a lack of rainwater. If we have turf on the Burke and more than one at that, all of these problems will not occur. That's why I'm strongly encouraging the vote to have two turf fields in Hastings. It would improve the success of athletes at Hastings, increasing the likelihood of going on to play sports in college and helping us create a bigger community of athletics. The impact this renovation would have on our district and our community is going to be remarkable. Hopefully, with the help of the board and the citizens, we can get there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jim Metzger. I guess I'm a 54th grader at my age. I want to talk a little bit about the bigger picture of the finances of the project. I spoke about this four weeks ago and nothing has changed, but I haven't heard anything from the board or from our esteemed consultants here. And again, I say, "You guys have done a great job." January 20th, things are going to change dramatically in this country. We don't know yet what that is going to entail, but what we're hearing, and I'm hearing more as I look at this, increased taxes, not increased taxes, but there's going to be increased costs to everything we do. The cost to import goods and services is going to go up. It is going to be extraordinarily difficult for us to predict at this point and to try and make a prediction on what our costs may be. And I'm not talking necessarily just about the school, but to just live in Hastings, cost of food, cost of services, cost of construction, everything is going to go, excuse me, go through the roof. Relying on electric owl, to even bring that into the conversation at this point, is very disingenuous. Yes, we have lost 30 years of commercial income tax and I have been on various boards and committees for the last 25 years advocating for commercial use. But electric owl is not a given, certainly not with the, what was going to be going on with the incoming administration. So to start relying on that as a cost benefit reminds me of Clark Griswold in National Lampoon's Vacation. "Hey, I'm going to put it in a swimming pool because I heard I'm going to get a good bonus." We don't know that's going to happen and I think we should not be even discussing that in these discussions. As a caution, as a project continues, and we've been looking at this, I've been looking at this for a few months, it starts to become a reality and we got, "Well, now we're starting from this and are we going to take away the..." We need to look at this as the overall project. We cannot accept the fact that we, "Oh, we're going to have this, but let's add that little..." No, we have to look at this in a big picture, over a long period of time, over realistic costs that we're looking at. As we add classrooms, I haven't seen any number on the cost for the staff to teach, to, for, to maintain those classrooms. We need to talk about that. That's an ongoing cost that we're going to be living with. $800 increase in taxes, what is that, the first year? What does that increase to over the next 20 years? And we keep adding on more budget needs because, yes, these buildings are old and are going to require additional costs. So stops telling us, "Oh, it's $800 a year." No, that's just probably the first year. Let's cross that out over the next 20 years and where are we going to be then? I still don't understand how declining enrollment requires a need for more spaces, we have heard. I'd love to know what geotechnical was done when Burke was done originally and why we have such problems now. Are we going to run into that same issue? Are we going to short-sight the work that needs to be done?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Good evening.
Good evening, Maryam. My name is Chris Varley. I've been a resident here in Hastings since March of 2011. I currently now live at 374 Warburton. You know, I'm following a lot of, you know, the students to start with and you folks being here late at night, everybody has, you know, full-time jobs and everything. I just want to applaud everybody for all this. It's some really well-thought-out plans and, you know, back and forth with all this. Anything that I had to say was really said by Siri and Lola at this point, Diana as well. And I, getting a different perspective, listening to the field hockey as well, you know, it opens me up. For those that don't know, I volunteer on the Little League Board the last few years, co-chair of softball in the town. So I've had, you know, direct workings with a lot of the community, a lot of volunteer coaches that have come through here. And now also in contact with the varsity coaches. They're a crutch for us in a sense that our young girls look up to all these players all the time. And I can say a direct impact over the last couple of years is varsity does a clinic every year with the Little League. They had to cancel it a couple of years because they had game rainouts, could not make those games or had to make those games up when we were doing the clinics with them. The disappointment on these kids' faces is really significant. You add into that, listening to the safety concerns with, you know, just one turf field, the condition that the current baseball field isn't shared with the field hockey, future-proofing. There's no such thing as future-proofing, but I think it really needs to be considered as how far in the future we've proved with how much we've spent on all this. Again, I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to do this and appreciate everybody that's here putting in these extra hours, week in, week out, month in, month out, year after year. So thank you all very kindly.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Sandy Seligson, and thank you for allowing me to speak, for all the efforts that all of you have put in and all the thought and really enthusiasm by the students. I've been in Hastings for over 30 years and two of my kids graduated from here. I'm not going to bring up, oh, it's already been brought up some about the, I'm not sure quite for the declining enrollment, issues about what's happening on January 20th, what's going to happen with our budget and things like that. And also the 20% of the people that live here are senior citizens, many with fixed income. I do want to bring up the issue of plastics. And I have some knowledge, I'm not an expert, but I have some knowledge about plastics. And everybody's talking here about how wonderful it makes the turf and maybe it does make it easier for people to, you know, play on. But as somebody who's done some looking at the literature, plastics is not a benign thing. It is not benign. It makes our lives easier in some ways. It definitely does. But plastics is, in all of these people that are here, it's in your blood. It's in nursing mother's milk, in nursing milk. There was an incredible study in the New England Journal of Medicine back in 2023, which showed that the people that had more plast, that had plastic in their arteries, in their carotid arteries, in their neck, they studied those versus the people that didn't have that. Most of the people did have some plastic, nanoplastics and microplastics in their plaques. They found that they died at a two and a half times, two and a half times, that's 250% higher rate of heart attacks and strokes within a less than three-year period. We are breathing plastics. We are absorbing it in our food. Everything's wrapped in plastic. It is not a benign thing. And so I get it that it's easier for, you know, for the athletes to be thinking, it is easier for them to play on it, but it's actually toxic. You're breathing in things and it's actually, plastic makes our climate change worse. And then, but, you know, but so we're doing these things with all this heavy rain because of climate change. So it's a kind of an irony that we're going to use more plastic and it's going to contribute to climate changing as well. So I just want to say that plastics is not benign. You think it's benign until you start looking at it. And PFAS is only one group of plastic, of type of toxins that are found in plastics. There are thousands of plastics, of toxins that are in plastics. Most of them we haven't even studied yet. So they're talking about it being an indication of increase in obesity and that it can go into the brain and it goes right to the substantia nigra, which is where Parkinson's disease starts. So there are so many things we don't know about it and I just want people to caution that plastics is not a benign issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Emmy and this is Tavia. We're both juniors at Hastings and we've played high school sports since freshman year and we would like to speak in favor of turf fields. Personally, last year in soccer, we had a senior tear her ACL after stepping into a divot on the grass fields, which ended her senior season early. There's a lot of concerns about the possible impacts of turf on injuries, but I think keeping grass that is not at all sustained is even more detrimental to athletes, especially female athletes who are at much higher risk for these destructive injuries, such as ACL tears. And as a female student athlete who has already sustained multiple injuries from these grass fields, playing on them is always a worry for me as one step could end my soccer career, which I intend to continue in college. I think that, and that should not be the case for anyone who steps on those fields. And I think that the safety of students needs to be a priority and I know that turf is really the right step for injury prevention.
Hi, everyone. So I've been playing field hockey since I was a freshman and as a team, we've really run into a lot of problems due to the grass field. As Ms. G mentioned, there is the sinkhole last year that could have seriously injured our team and players if it was during our season and could definitely happen again on our field. We've had countless twisted ankles and knees, myself included, because of the divots and uneven grass. So that's obviously a huge problem, safety. Emmy and I also wanted to bring up the fact that girl sports have never really had as much attention and resources here in Hastings. And without two turf fields, girl sports teams will not be able to practice enough on the turf. Field hockey especially is a sport that's a completely different game on grass versus turf. And our team has had an extremely hard time going to away games with zero experience on turf and practicing one day out of a week or a small time in their schedule won't let us develop our turf skills like the other teams who have practice every day on turf.
Also, I mean, I can't even count how many times during my high school career that we've been moved to the lower field because a boy's team, which sometimes wasn't even a school team, has been needing to play on the upper field. And it's really necessary to have these two fields to stop this from happening, even though it shouldn't be happening at all in the first place because we need to practice on the turf field for the same exact reason as Tavia. We play all our games on turf fields that are away and we need to have this practice on turf fields.
One last thing. Last year, when the weather was really rough during the fall sports season, the field hockey team was forced to practice in the hockey team was forced to practice in the green gym. And we had to put socks over our sticks in order to play and not like damage the green gym. So with this limitation, the socks on our sticks, there's zero way that we could practice the skills that we needed in our games. And this happened multiple, multiple times. We had to practice with these socks. And every practice really does count. So with a turf field, the team could practice in a lot more weather conditions, which would make everything a lot more safe, enjoyable and efficient. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Lemmons, 31 South Drive. Good evening to everyone. It's a long evening, but I have found it actually very edifying to listen to what everybody has had to say. Hopefully the board has as well. One thing that's very clear is that we have a real difference of opinion about a number of things that are coming up with this bond. But we're actually having a civil discussion, which is, I think, remarkable. And I think we should all feel very good about that. So I, I had just a couple of things I wanted to say. I've gone through the responses to the Q and A and I think I'm glad that you are taking those seriously and giving detailed responses. There are still questions and I know that not everybody's ever going to be satisfied with the answers, but there are a few things that I would like to raise and ask for further clarification. One is, it is critically important, and that's clear in the comments tonight, that the cost and the taxpayer impact is really important. It's going to be a big factor in whether this bond is voted in or doesn't succeed. So I think it's very important that we have really, really reliable estimates of what that impact is. I look at, I haven't done the detailed analysis, but I look at the fact that it was said that the tax impact was around $400 for the $16.5 million bond for the average taxpayer. We're looking at three times that. To me, that computes to three, should compute to three times as such. Now, I realize it's a complicated calculation and that's why I'm asking, tell us how that's derived. Tell us what's, how state aid feeds into the revenue side of the budget. We can see the debt service changes in the budget. We really need to know that because trust is very important here and we have to understand very clearly what the financial impacts are. I just want to reiterate too what Jim Metzger said. First of all, Electric Owl is not a done deal and it shouldn't be a part of any of this discussion. Secondly, and Alex, you gave, I think, a really nice background there to the fact that our industrial footprint, which was in the waterfront, mainly provided a huge amount of tax payment for the village. When that went away, guess who picked it up? The residents picked it up. That's who picked it up. If Electric Owl comes in and pays taxes, if the school scoops that money, that's costing taxpayers, it doesn't matter how you look at it. The fact is, as a village trustee, I really wanted to see us develop the waterfront because we could get some commercial activity there. We could begin to put back in the tax base that we need. When we start to get that, I really think it is a huge mistake to immediately write, scoop that money up and say, oh, great, we got it. Because that gives us no relief and we need that. It's part of what allows our community to be what it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Josh Phillips. I've been here for eight or nine years. I have three kids, one in high school, one in middle school, one in the fifth grade. I've served on the board and as a coach with the Little League and am currently the Hastings Little League president. I just want to say first off, thank you to everybody for everything that's, that's been done so far and the level of thought and consideration for all of the varying perspectives. Just kudos to the board. It's also great to see that the feedback was heard. I was not at the session a couple of weeks ago, but I heard about it afterwards, about the sort of inspirational and impassioned pleas from our student athletes, particularly in the softball side. And so kudos to you all for hearing that feedback and incorporating it into the changes. I don't want to repeat, I think Siri and Lola and even our field hockey athletes, I think, I don't need to repeat the points about some of the benefits of the turf. But so the only other thing I'll add that's maybe hasn't been mentioned that I think is also to be considered, when we talk about baseball and softball, and we have two fields on this diagram now that are, you know, still planned to be grass, you know, it's worth considering that baseball and softball are sports that are played in the spring, which are, tend to be the rainiest portions of the year. And so you do, you do experience a number of rainouts of practices and games. And I think the other piece of information that is also not been considered is that, I can't speak for the other sports, but I can say that baseball and softball, there are dependencies between not only what happens with varsity, JV and mod, but we share with Little League, though, some of those fields. And so there's a knock-on effect. So every time we have, you know, rainouts from a varsity, JV or mod, that may also then impact another 300 families and, you know, 30 to 90 volunteers that we have on the Little League side. So my point being is that, you know, this is not encapsulated to just the high school student athletes and the middle school student athletes. It actually has a broader impact to our community. And then finally, I will just echo some of the other points that the student athletes made about the benefits of turf. I've seen it firsthand at Alexander Hamilton High School in Elmsford. We'd have practices or games there and it could have been pouring rain all night and we show up on the next morning and we're able to play a game. So I can say with firsthand experience that it certainly has its benefits. And then finally, I just want to say, this is not to say that we can't or should not also acknowledge the other concerns, right? So the other sort of, the three themes that we've heard is, you know, hey, let's get more turf, more availability, more safety for our kids. Clearly, you know, I agree with that, but I'm not here to discount either concerns with environmental issues or concerns with the financial impact. We're all residents here, we all face those same concerns. So I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Chloe Teesdale. I live at 8 South Gate. I have two children at Hillside, a fourth grader and a second grader, who are obsessive soccer and baseball players. I'm also an epidemiologist who studies the health of children. So I did a deep dive on this, came in very sort of ecumenical about turf fields and came away very concerned. So I, we've, people have already shared, it sounds like people are knowledgeable about PFAs. It's great that the companies say they're going to take PFAs out, but what are they going to replace them with? So this feels a lot like what we talk about in public health as greenwashing. And so I would advise us to be very cautious, right? We all know the story of Red Die, right? They just keep remaking it every time one version of it gets banned. So we want to be really cautious about that. I also, it's so great that the athletes are saying that they haven't gotten injured on turf, but there is no evidence that suggests that turf is superior to natural turf when it comes to injuries. In fact, the evidence suggests that they're more likely to have ankle and foot injuries on turf compared to natural turf. That is just what the data bear out, right? And there are a fair amount of data on that. Are there good long-term studies on health risks from artificial turf for children and adolescents? No, there are not. The data do not exist. That does not indicate that it is safe. An absence of evidence does not tell us that we are safe using this and having our kids play on it. So I'm not going to list, I was going to read you the list of what the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency lists as potential risks from PFAs, but I think we're all familiar with that. But I really, again, it's not just the PFAs that someone else mentioned, it's also PAHs, right? The polycyclic, I'm not going to say it correctly, right? No, PAHs, benzene, heavy metals, which I know the companies also say have been removed, things like benzene, things like lead that came from recycled tires. Again, what are they replaced with and are those things safe? We just don't know. So I'm hearing, it's so great to hear that our students are so invested in athletics. I think that's great. That is so good for children's health. I want my kids to be able to play all the time. I want them to have access to fields. But why is turf the only option that we're talking about? That is what I don't understand. We're spending all this money on a plan and we're mainly talking and debating turf. Why can't we talk about other options? Why are there not better alternatives for natural turf? So.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Hey. So a little bit of this will be apparent, but it's good for the public record. My name is Eric Norlander. I'm a 17-year resident at 125 Farragut Avenue, actually right across the street from the Burke itself. Thank you to the board for all the work on the various proposals thus far. I think that in looking at the various plans, we are short shrifting the community and the student athletes of the town by not pursuing the plan containing two multi-sport fields. To share in the benefit of turf and of lighting seems to be in the best interest of all the student athletes who would utilize these fields. While I think it's a step forward to bring the softball field up to the Burke, I think that to continue to keep baseball and softball on natural grass still presents the problem of wet fields, muddy infield, et cetera. And we've heard from members of the softball team and up-and-coming players, including both of my daughters, as to why this has such a detrimental effect on practices and games. And truly, that applies to all the sports affected by this proposal. So I would urge you to reconsider the two multi-sport fields and give these athletes the best chance to excel and to potentially springboard into college athletics. I think the facilities we provide have to match the dedication of these kids. I also think that the energy, excitement and town spirit that can be generated by a great facility and especially the magic of games under the lights would be a long overdue civic upgrade. And I want to say that I agree with the gentleman from the last board meeting who discussed turf fields being a revenue driver for the town. That is not a consideration to be set aside lightly and I hope it will be thoroughly investigated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. So yeah, my name is John Kornfeld. I've lived in Hastings for a large part of the years since 1998, class of 2016. And represent, we were a good soccer team back then and I played five years of travel team soccer on a turf field, so got a lot of experience about that. But I just wanted to start with saying, I grew up feeling like the fields that we're talking about in Hastings were public fields and, you know, we self-organized, we played as much as we could. And that's a big part of how Hastings became the number one team in the state. You know, we didn't used to get kicked off the fields like I've heard that it happens now. And I'm sorry that that is happening. And I hope that goals will remain standing on the fields. I've seen a lot of the time, people take the goals off during the offseason and it's not conducive to creating the best of what we could be. So I also hope there will be more leniency with the fields when it rains. We used to practice in the rain and we never destroyed the fields. And I've coached soccer too, and I know it's not up to the coaches. It usually goes higher up. A lot of the time, a field does seem like it would be good to play on. I hope that we'll consider the costs of the recent fields that were constructed since I graduated and I guess started in 2017 or so. They seem like good fields. They seem like better fields than I've ever seen in all the time I've lived in Hastings. So I wonder how many fields will we pay for at once if we keep getting new ones like every seven years? So I also, I've played and coached at Scenic Hudson in Irvington. It's a great example of a well-maintained grass field with lights. I'm confused why a second set of lights was removed from the plan when it seemed like the most effective opportunity to expand playing hours and to expand the atmosphere. It's a lot of fun playing under lights. I think if we do build a turf field based on what I've heard here tonight, field hockey should get the top priority on that. I think Hastings is a community of great character. We don't allow commercial restaurants, pharmacies, retail. We build from the ground up. And on a hot day, sitting on the Burke estate, you can feel that cool ground below. It's a calming presence to be alive with our fields, to keep us cool during the heat of the competition. To people in the 8:00 AM leagues, I'm glad that you're creating that culture seriously. But remember who will be playing on the field at 4:00 PM, frying on a turf field that will be above 100 degrees the majority of the season. They get so much hotter than the air temperature. It burns the soles of the feet, the field is so hot. So there's no relief even to, you know, get that, the heat off, gets hard to breathe. We have plastic towns all around us that have four soccer field, four turf soccer fields, Starbucks, Walgreens, like Dobbs Ferry. Well, in my six years playing for the Hastings schools, we beat Dobbs every time. We took special pride in beating them. And, you know, we don't need to follow along with the herd. We're a unique town. I think we're the best of the River towns. And I hope we'll keep what makes Hastings unique. The green will keep us gold. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Hanline. I live at 55 Burnside Drive. I didn't write out something formal, so I hope I get to just all the little things that I wanted to mention. But just quickly, mainly I wanted to talk about the fields, but I did just want to quickly say something about the buildings because I work in the middle school, so I kind of have a unique perspective as a parent from the community that works in the school. And I do totally agree with the need to change the build, you know, adding more space to the buildings. I do see that it's very difficult for the teachers with the limited space that there is now. They have to share classrooms, they have to leave the rooms and find, try to find other spaces for pullout situations. There's just not, there's not a lot of space. It's not a great situation for, you know, a number of teachers. And just as far as the hallways and the congestion, I experience that all the time. I really do not enjoy walking through the hallways with the middle school students because it's like they're just packed in and I'm always worried that I'm going to be, you know, like kids are going to run into me and whatever. So I agree with all that, just there needs to be more space, better flow and the cafeteria also. It's overcrowded. So all those things I think are, you know, totally accurate and need to be addressed. I wanted to talk a little bit about the field. So I have three kids, two kids in their twenties who are already working and my last one is a senior in high school. All three of my children are athletes. They all played soccer and lacrosse. We have also lived through two renovations. We moved here 23 years ago. I don't know if I said that. So we, when we moved in, it was a forest. I don't know if everyone knows that, but behind our house was a forest. And three months after the trees were raised and the first fields were created, and they were done so poorly, the first time, there was even a baseball diamond. I forgot about this. There was a baseball diamond that was put in there that was never played on because I think the people that were hired just didn't do a very good job with the drainage. There's a lot of drainage issues on the Burke. Something else was just recently done to address the drainage by the practice field, which is like where the girl softball field is up in this slide. There's been a lot of wasted money because they were redone. I think it was eight years ago was the second, the second time the fields were put in and they had to put in, they put in new turf in that renovation. And the fields honestly are pretty crappy. And people come to our town and I've heard them say like, don't you pay the same taxes we do? These fields are embarrassing. And I totally agree. It has not been a wonderful experience for my three kids playing on those grass fields because I think it's impossible for, oh my God, that was so fast. I didn't even get to everything I wanted to say.
It's next time.
I don't even know. Anyhow, I just, I strongly believe in turf. It's just the lights are the things that I have the issue with because I think people aren't really considering how it's going to affect people on our street because our houses are about 30 feet or so above the turf fields. So anyhow, sorry. You get to say everything I want to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Greg White. Kristy Rutherford.
We didn't specify. You can come up with a, thank you.
Hi, my name is Christie Weatherford. I'm going to take a hard left on my comments tonight, sorry. I am a mother of four. My eldest is in third grade. I live at 11 Warren Street. My son started kindergarten in 2021, post-pandemic. And I have some extreme concerns with the literacy curriculum that I've shared here at the board previously. I've attended the demonstrations, and I've been very well-supported at Hillside. So my criticisms are not without my thanks. I'm incredibly grateful for the interventions that my son received with reading. But I think that is solely due to a single educator that was highly trained in evidence-based literacy curriculum and instruction. And she got my son reading. Well, I'm obsessed with her, honestly. My concern tonight is around the professional development budget and the spend for Gravity Goldberg. Specifically, Gravity Goldberg was a balanced literacy-based consultancy vendor. And I have concerns with the RFP process this year and the vendor selection. There were other very reputable vendors that submitted proposals that are highly aligned to science of reading. And my son is a testament to evidence-based reading techniques do work. I have a new kindergartner. I've spent thousands of dollars to get him science-based literacy curriculum tutoring prior to starting kindergarten in anticipation of just getting ahead of any queuing, anything that I've heard from other parents. I talk a lot through the literacy advocacy group with other parents about their experiences with their children. And it is heartbreaking and shocking the way that students are struggling. I think balanced literacy and the blended approach at Hillside works for a lot of kids, but the ones that it doesn't, it's heartbreaking. And I really feel like Gravity Goldberg, we really need to see a change in the way that we're approaching literacy curriculum in the town. And specifically, I'm concerned about the policy change that's been proposed to increase the threshold that the board would need to approve to $20,000 because this would have been able to be skirted without my ability to provide comment. And so, yes, I'm specifically asking for Gravity Goldberg to not be our professional development vendor this year and for us to go with some of the other RFPs that were proposed. And some of the firms that proposed the first time that didn't the second time are willing to re-propose the second time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Polly Bajor. I am a 43-year, I'm not 43 years. But I've been in, I've lived in the village for 43 years. Three young men now have gone through, three boys went through the school system. And I'm also the chairperson of the Hastingsland Hudson Senior Council. Obviously, the issue, it's heartbreaking to have to make choices that, that one would want to have all the money in the world to have the best schools, lowest taxes, keep us older folks in town. We don't. I have, I'm a signatory of a letter that we sent to the board and the supervisor of 148 other older residents of the village registering our concern with the bond and also with the, what we see as potential dangers of the synthetic turf that Dr. Seligson and the epidemiologist in the back have mentioned. You know, we want to stay here. We did a, our committee did a survey a couple of years ago and found 75% of the people who responded wanted to stay in the village for 10 years or more. The, by far, the largest issue that people had was with the taxes and that they felt that they couldn't stay in the village. One of the benefits of having us old folks here is that we remember some of the past when we arrived. This is a deja vu. When we arrived, we had a bond. And some of you might remember, the older generation said, "Reading, writing, and arithmetic were good enough for us. Why do we need calculus, physics, and Latin?" So I'm on the other side, but I'm not, we're not talking, I in fact haven't heard actually enough about how this really is going to affect the substantive facts of teaching in the curriculum. But the request is that you, that you keep the, keep us in mind. It's for all taxpayers, obviously, and to try to focus on what's absolutely necessary. It's what I came in with after having been here during this presentation. I've moved from absolutely necessary, from absolutely necessary, like so that the roof doesn't fall down, to necessary for our kids to have the best education that they can without having us move out.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, how are you doing?
Hi.
There've been a lot of people to follow. They've spoken very highly and very eloquently about the concerns they have about the turf field. So I'm here to speak about the building. As an architect, I find it fascinating to see how the building's going to help transform, in addition, can help transform the school's priorities and the school's education. But I think we should ask for some information, and maybe the board has gotten it. But it would be very helpful to understand how many classrooms have been created, how many classes were started from. I did an informal calculation looking at phases one and two, and I, my number was lower than what was proposed. So it'd be just helpful information for people to get. Also, when it comes to the conference room, excuse me, the cafeteria being moved, that makes a lot of sense. It just helps start the dominoes of the spaces moving around. But the cafeteria is an interesting space. It has a sense of grandeur to it because it's a double-height space. It's also perhaps inefficient. A single-story cafeteria would be functional. It would be practical. It would, could be well-designed. It could be a center, as people have talked about it. But by doing a single story, you have a potential for having another set of educational spaces. And the first floor, the basement floor outside the music place, the music rooms, that's a corridors against the wall, and that becomes a potential double-loaded corridor for the floor below the cafeteria, which could be at the entrance level of the high school. Just a suggestion, but I think it's something to pursue. And again, it would be helpful to understand what the concept of a breakout room is, kind of what that means in reality, what it will do for people. How many do you need? There's no quantification. I believe the cafeteria itself should be looked at. Does anyone here know what the previous current cafeteria occupancy is? Anyone know what the new cafeteria's occupancy is? And does that occupancy meet the needs to make better, have enough space so kids aren't eating very early or eating in areas of time so they're really cramped? And that's just not a very pleasant thing to have for a kid in school. Lastly, I want to talk about the entrance. The entrance is actually something that should be looked at in SECR very tightly because you're going to have an impact on traffic flow around the school and around the community. By going to a single entrance, you're going to have all the drop-offs and pickups concentrating on people coming in and out of one area. I think someone talked about Roseville being part of the parking lot. That is the case. And so I just, I think also the flow from that, if you do continue with a single entrance, the flow into the building around the green gym where the two eager stairs are down to the gym is kind of a pinch point. And you're going to have all the kids come rolling in that area. I think a possible solution is to look at taking the entrance and making each of the existing entrances, the middle school and the high school, have some of the same amenities of access and what you're trying to do in a central place. Again, that's, I'm presuming the traffic issues was a problem just for a moment. There was a while back, there was an experiment that lasted a day in the district where they decided to change the traffic flow. I don't know if Jody remembers this, but it was a disaster without planning. So thank you for your time, and thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is George Stevenson. I live at 59 Hillside, across the street from this building. There are two things that I want to, possibly three things that I want to address. The first is demography. I am a deputy chairperson at a CUNY school. And in planning for our future over the next few years, all that we hear about is the demographic cliff. The demographic cliff that starts in 2008. Lower enrollment, lower, everything is, all the expectations are for fewer and fewer people until, you know, the things pick back up again, I think in 2018, which is more of a concern here. I deal with college-age students. But the demographic cliff is something that we are planning for and that we have been planning for quite a while. And I think it behooves our little town to think about that when they're talking about the biggest bond that they have ever gone for in terms of that. The other thing is, speaking of demography, when my son was a student athlete in Hastings High School on the same team that Mr. Cornfeld's played on, we attended a recruiting seminar that was held at the high school where the statistic that blew everybody's mind was 5% of high school athletes play varsity sports in college. 5%, 1 in 20. So I think that it's important that students have access to excellent facilities, but the dream of college is not something, the dream of playing varsity sports in college is not something that a majority, or even a small minority of them, it's only the small minority of them have. Finally, as somebody who lives across the street from the school, the traffic issues and the parking seem to be, for the, in this plan, seem to be so entirely inadequate that it is just extraordinary that the idea that 30 extra spaces will deal with it. There have been times that I can't back out of my driveway because of all the drop-off traffic coming into the green gym entrance. The last thing I just want to mention, so just to get to a fourth thing, I do think it behooves us again to plan for things being different after January 20th. The vow of the incoming administration to take it out on the state suggests that New York State is not going to be a, is going to be even less of a net recipient of federal aid than it has been in the past. That's something that we have to be, have our, keep our eyes open about so that we don't make promises and commitments that we can't afford to keep later. And then just for a fifth thing, why do we need a second football field?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Dave Skolnik, 47 Hillside. Actually, I'm not. I'm not going to even take three minutes. I was glad and surprised at the way this meeting ultimately was structured, given what I watched with great care of the work session because I was anticipating basically a presentation, and then according to what it says in the agenda, you were going to vote on something, on the SECR. So I think it's still, I'm happy that whatever it is that I misunderstood or you changed an approach. I think, judging from what I've heard here and what I've been thinking about, you need a lot more time. And I tried to, I don't want to get her in trouble, but I did, I was glad that Jody asked the question last time about why you were being asked to vote on this this time. And in fact, there were some reasons given, but it didn't seem strong enough reasons to overcome what's clearly still a lot of remaining discussion. So ultimately, what I would, given what the comments have been, and I would love to, I wish this had happened a year ago. It feels like we need that much time to work through some of these conditions that seem impossible to reconcile. But given what you've, and the company has posed as a timeline, I feel like the biggest challenge for you right now is to figure out how to stretch it and how to make it clear that you're going to be able to actually deal with all of the issues that had been brought up without ending up having to make a decision that you're not really comfortable with. So that's what I'm hoping to see from some change in the timeline. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, Arthi Muthukrishnan, 160 High Street. I have two kids in the school district, a sixth grader and a ninth grader now. I want to first thank everybody, and I want to show appreciation for all the deep thought and work that's gone into all the planning here. I'm also part of the Conservation Commission of the village. And I want to say up ahead that I support the decision to upgrade the athletic fields. I heard from all the athletes, young athletes, and the parents and volunteers among all the different sports here. It's necessary. But I will, I am not in support of a plastic turf field. I encourage you to explore alternatives. There are alternatives out there. There was a mention of turf talent and rain talent out there. I think you need to go and take another look at it. I do think we need more time to evaluate all these options. And as far as the research I've done and what I've heard about these options, it does allow you to play in inclement weather. And that seems to be the biggest setback that our fields are facing right now. And with changing weather, yes, last year was an anomaly, and we had a lot of rain in the fall. This year, we had no rain. Next year, we may just have 100-degree weather days in the fall, and your plastic field will be unusable, right? So we need to think about options that are practical and that are, that take into account everybody in this equation. And we are the adults. We are the caregivers of our children. And we need to make the right decisions, even if it's not the most popular decision, and it's not keeping in character with what the neighbors are doing. Hastings has always been at the vanguard. We moved here in 2015, and we found that this was a town that had banned plastic bags, when no other town over here had done that. So can we please, please become leaders again and show the way for the rest of the community to follow along and not just follow what everybody else is doing? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello.
Good evening, board members and everyone. My name is Maya Sanzel, and I'm a 10th grader at Hastings High School. I'm here to reiterate the critical need for a turf field at our school. As a varsity athlete in both field hockey and lacrosse, I've witnessed firsthand the detrimental impact of our current grass field on our teams. The unpredictable nature of grass fields poses a significant safety risk due to the possibility of divots and holes, as well as muddy fields being slipping risks. I just want to say it one more time. I play field hockey on a baseball field. Like, secondly, playing on grass consistently puts us at a severe disadvantage. Turf fields provide a faster, completely different playing surface that is crucial for developing the speed, agility, and skills required to compete at a high level. Every single college field hockey team plays on turf in all the countries in the world. When we play away games on turf, we are often outmatched due to our lack of experience on that surface. Finally, inclement weather frequently forces the cancellation of practices, hindering our ability to train and improve. This year, many field hockey games and practices were canceled due to muddy conditions, significantly impacting our team's season. These issues affect not only my sports, but also many other teams at Hastings High School. These issues affect not only my sports, but also many other teams at Hastings High School. Investing in a turf field is not just about improving our athletic performance, it's about prioritizing the safety and well-being of our student athletes and providing them with the resources that they need to reach their full potential. For all those worried about the price or the taxes, this is an investment, true, but Hastings Properties have high values because of the good quality of the school. Hastings property values are high because we have a good school in our town. That is why my family moved here. And this bond will make that quality even better and raise that quality to the next level. And plus, there are options like coconut turf that teams like Irvington or Bronxville have that are both sustainable and safe. Lastly, I urge you all to consider a way that we will be able to ensure that practice time and game time on our turf field will be equitable and fair for every single team. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. I'm Evan Cohen and I live at 59 Burnside Drive next to Lisa. I didn't really have anything prepared, but her husband who had to leave reminded me, and it's good questions for you, all the houses around Burnside are at least 30 or 40 feet above the field. And you said 60-foot lights don't shine in people's houses, but 30-foot lights do. But that would make the 60-foot lights 30 feet, so they would shine in our houses. So, again, it's a question that needs to be thought about. Everybody here wants turf, everybody wants lights, but probably none of you would say, put it in my backyard. So it would be nice to be considerate. I also look at this picture, it's like you're putting a million-dollar parking lot up this narrow road with 30, like 30 spots. There's going to be 17 games going on at a time. How are people in Farragut going to know that there's no spots available in the 30 spots? It just seems like a mess. And it's like, it does need more time to be investigated. And what happened to Reynolds? Reynolds is a beautiful field that nobody's talking about. It seems less problematic, and it seems like it would be nice to like just put the fields in different places so it's not all congested. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I sent you an email, Aaron Golombeski, 6 Rose Street, yesterday, sharing a lot of my information about turf talents and drain talent and my concerns about the fields. I do want to give a very quick shout-out to Mr. Hornblatt, was it? Kornfeld, I'm sorry. Hastings, keep it green. That is, that is the slogan that I hope you remember here. I want to talk very quickly about expertise. We live in an era that is anti-expert. We see it in our voting patterns, we see it when people say, "I'm not an expert," but we have experts in this room tonight who have brought to bear information about the dangers of plastic turf with regard to the environment and with regard to health. I encourage you to pay attention to that information as you make this decision. They are experts. It does not take a lot of searching to find experts who will say, "Plastic turf is a nightmare for health." One thing that has not been mentioned, it should be, plastic turf has also been demonstrated to cause blunt force trauma to head injuries, particularly in football and soccer. You will see this when you take a look at the research. Please pay attention to those experts. Another level of expert that you should be paying attention to is the greatest players of sports in the world. They are consistently against playing on plastic turf, whether it be the National Football League, whether it be women's soccer that banned plastic turf two World Cups ago, men's FIFA World Soccer will not be playing on plastic in the upcoming tournament here in 2026. These are the experts that you should be listening to. Another level of expert I want to talk to is about is consultants. You have some pretty good consultants here, but my concern is they seem to constantly been going for the simple answer when it comes to this really complex question of what to do with grass or plastic turf. Put plastic on it, put plastic on it, put plastic on it. I watched the last meeting when the gentleman from the LA group made a presentation and showed you all of the schools in the area that had put plastic on it. Why? It's easy. They don't have to think about it anymore. They don't have to deal with the fallout of plastic that's placed on communities, and then you're going to call them up in seven years and you're going to say, "Hey, we need more plastic." I ask experts like this group, and I wish you'd reach out to me, I've spoken with the LA group, but I haven't spoken with the LAN group, to discuss new alternatives. The company that I work with, the reason I work with them is I saw these alternatives in the Netherlands and they were beautiful. In the middle of a terrible drought in Europe, they were green fields. My kid played on them. He's the only kid in Hastings right now who has played on a drain talent field. You can ask him, he's six, he'll tell you it was great. My, my door is open, I hope we can talk soon, and I hope to have more conversations about the complexity of these fields. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Hi, welcome. Gizela Abrams, 192 Vedard Avenue. I have two kids in the school system, an eighth grader who does cross-country and a ninth grader who plays, a girl who plays soccer and lacrosse. So neither of my kids will be as negatively affected as many of the others here. I want to start out by thanking the wonderful student athletes, many of the softball and field hockey girls who are here today, for their eloquent point that they made last meet, at the last meeting, when their field was suddenly removed from the plan. And also to you, the board, and to LAN for really having listened to them and kind of brought the field back, even if it's not in an ideal way. What I'm still struggling with is the reduction to only one turf field. A few points. First, our kids constantly play on turf fields when they play at literally every school that they play in a given season. Second, our kids don't get as much practice overall because of the many weather-related cancellations, or they have to cram in all the practices and games into a very truncated schedule, leading to strain-related injuries and so forth. Third, no matter the sport, the game plays differently on turf versus grass, and again, giving them a real disadvantage by not being able to practice on it. And fourth, they have played on similar surfaces when they were younger because most playgrounds have rubber, including I think at the Hillside, and they will play again on turf when they go to college. Even if they don't play in a D1, you know, they may play club sports and so forth. So saying that it is out of health concerns is really only minimizing a minimal amount of time that they're exposed to this. And overall, putting them at a huge disadvantage. Having one field is going to put a huge pressure on scheduling, and I'm frankly concerned about reintroducing football onto the Burke Estates when they have Reynolds, and I agree, like what's happening with Reynolds, it's a beautiful field there. And as a girl mom and seeing where and how decisions have been made, I'm really concerned that once again, it'll be the girl sports and the girl teams who will be put at a disadvantage when it comes to getting equal time on turf fields to practice. And finally, the considerations about removing lights, especially if there's only one field, I think makes it even more impossible to get all the teams that need to be practicing the practice time and the game time that they need. I strongly urge the board to go back to two fields to provide equitable sports opportunities for all sports, all players, and if necessary, find saving somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, good evening. I'm going to go with Kristi and take a hard left for a moment, for three minutes. Good evening, folks. Starting off, for the record, I've now been in the school district for three school years, and I have yet to meet a single school district employee who has anything but benevolence in their hearts. The aides, the teachers, the administration, they all show tremendous dedication to the students, and that part is not even remotely lost on me while I still continue to ask for changes. Once again, I come before you to request from a slightly different angle each time, Science of Reading aligned professional development for teachers, so that we can support that part of Hillside's blended literacy curricula. So balanced literacy was rolled out in 2017, 2018 school year, and there was a five-year implementation strategy. Gravity Goldberg Consultants headed up this endeavor, and the BOE received multiple presentations on the Balanced Literacy Plan in the spring of 2017. I'm not sure who is here for that. I wasn't. The September 2022 Literacy Presentation to Parents was entitled Balanced Literacy at Hillside. I attended that. Shortly thereafter, more and more folks listened to the podcast, sold the story, and the term "balanced literacy" fell out of favor. So much so, in fact, that more recent literacy presentations focus exclusively on our Science of Reading part of the curricula, erasing all mention of balanced literacy. There hasn't been a formal curriculum review, and professional development has been from the Balanced Literacy Consultant Group, Gravity Goldberg. So I'm not hedging a random guess when I say that balanced literacy remains the foundation of Hillside's blended, combined literacy curricula. Phonics is the add-on, not the primary. That hurts. Science of Reading simply cannot be centered at Hillside under the current circumstances, but we're not doomed. The blended curriculum, curricula leads to the loss of phonics with fidelity, and you know how much I love fidelity. If the blended curricula were sufficient, I wouldn't be here. This approach has had a detrimental impact on my son and my finances. Like Kristi, I spent thousands of dollars on Science of Reading tutoring, undoing the three-queuing habits. So experts now know that struggling readers are more likely to glom onto guessing methods, that's the three-queuing and the predictive text, because those struggling readers find the decoding laborious. When given an alternative reading approach, like guessing from pictures, it's hardly even a choice, that's a lifeline, but it's not one that teaches fundamental decoding skills. So the students who are most at risk for the learning challenges are also the ones who feel the negative impacts of three-queuing the most. I continue to see Science of Reading aligned professional development as the first and most important shift, professional development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen Barrett.
Good evening. Hi, good evening, thank you. So if we could get FIFA or Women's National Team grass fields, I'd be in support of that if that was in the budget, to get grass fields maintained like that. But I understand it's not in the budget, and so the alternative is turf. So I am here to support turf, I'm here to support two turf fields, and I'm also here to give a personal experience, the theme that you've heard all evening long, but our personal experience, I have a ninth grade daughter and a sixth grade daughter, both who play soccer. One played in a soccer club locally, my older one played in a local club that utilized the Hastings Fields. The other one, the same season, and the season is probably about two years ago, the same season, the younger one played in a club that had access to turf fields. So in that season, it was about two years ago, three practices a week for each of them and games on the weekends, and my older daughter basically had no practices, why I'm sending off my younger daughter to practice every, every night. So I could see my older daughter is not getting to play soccer. And then games, we would shuffle around games, can we have, does our field for games? The games were always wet, we couldn't use the games, and then you lose home field advantage as well because them games are getting rescheduled to schools that have turf. So it is, it is real. The two kids, and one of them played all season long and didn't miss a beat, and the other one hardly played because they utilized the Hastings Fields. So it is, it is very clear and you can see it. So I support the two fields, and the other point I'd like to make is that just shifting gears a little bit, cost estimates, right? We're here with this big bond and we, I heard the term, we need, these need to be accurate cost estimates. And I think we don't have a crystal ball, this work is going to be planned a few years out in advance. And so one of the, what are the major factors in the cost? It's the labor and it's the cost of materials. So in the cost estimates, you have these escalation factors that you need to put in there. We should be very open about what those escalation factors are because we're planting this bond on that, we're planning this bond on those escalation factors, and I think we should understand what we are basing that bond on because, again, we don't know what's going to happen to labor costs, we don't know what's going to happen to material costs. So I reiterate that that should be something that is talked about when you are setting what that, that budget is for this project. So I'm all support for turf fields, and I'm in support of two turf fields because there's no way that 11 teams are going to be able to play in one season on one turf field and get all the practice time in and the games where every other school, I shouldn't say that I don't have the facts on that, any other school I've been to in Westchester, in Rockland, in, in the surrounding areas, are, were playing on turf and those kids are practicing all, all season long and our kids aren't. So athletics are part of academics, it teaches time management, it teaches team building, and I think even if kids aren't going on to play college sports, they will keep that for the rest of their life and it will impact them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everybody, to both the board and all here. So I wanted to quickly comment on a couple of different things on the agenda for the bond and just how they impact me as students, and I know you've, I know obviously you guys are like, "Oh my God, it's just another student talking about how the fields are so important." I get that, 100%. I think there are two really important things to address when we talk about the fields, and I'm going to talk about the school a bit too. So firstly, with the fields, I think one really important factor we're forgetting is, yes, of course there's studies saying, it's very inconclusive evidence based on if there's better protection for athletes with turf based on athletes with, it's very inconclusive evidence. The factor that I really want us to take into account is that we are in New York State, and New York State, as we all know, weather is crazy. Like you just don't know what's going to happen. And all of these studies that are looking at, oh, how tough, how, excuse me, how turf is like beneficial, is more, is worse and encourages injuries as opposed to grass, well, those are studies conducted in Florida, in California, in different climates where there are, the grass, the grass playing surfaces are under ideal conditions, they have funding that is constantly forcing for the repair of these fields, you know? And so I'm saying, yes, under idealized conditions, of course, the turf may, might, even it's inconclusive, that's going to encourage more injuries, but we live in New York State, we're not going to constantly maintain the fields, we're not having all these factors helping us. So what does that mean? Well, turf is just more beneficial, so that's one point, that all these studies that are saying turf is worse for you, they're not, they're conducted under idealizing conditions. I encourage us to look at studies that are conducted in New York State with rain, with snow, with hail, with whatever conditions this will throw at us, because obviously those are so present in our society, obviously. So the second thing I want us to think about turf really quickly is that I know we are really reluctant to go with the fact that, okay, yes, all these towns have turf, we should have turf as well. I get that. However, any athlete that I could tell you, I know, we have our field hockey players, I'm a baseball player personally, it's a completely different game on turf. And I understand that we shouldn't be encouraging turf, and I honestly promote, looking at like, I forgot what the name was, but those like combinations of like, like different types of turf that are more equal friendly, I encourage those, research, coconut turf, for example, exactly, like those kinds of turf. I encourage looking at that, but I do think we need turf because turf is a different playing surface. You're cutting differently on turf, you're running differently on turf, I pitch differently on turf. And so I need to be able to play on turf, and for those 5% of athletes that go to college. Okay, maybe I won't play in college, but why are we actively discouraging that by preventing us from playing on turf at our home fields? We should have the opportunity, equal opportunities that all the other towns in Westchester that I play. We should have the same opportunities as those students that play on turf and get our chance to play at college. The second thing I want to touch on really quickly, I'm sure I'm running out of time, is the school, because I know we haven't touched on that really a lot. So out of the 24 classrooms that are designated for middle school use, 20 out of the 24 classrooms currently in the middle school are not complying with today's standards for square footage per student. 20 out of the 24 classrooms. There's simply not enough space for the students. All those classrooms, any middle school teacher can tell you, are being used to the maximum. Students are cramped, cramped in there, and it's just not up with guidelines on what's beneficial for the students, like there's just not enough space. And so encouraging this addition with, it's giving you six new classrooms, I'm pretty sure, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's giving six new classrooms with the beneficial place, with the added space for the students that they completely and entirely need. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
I just have a couple of quick points. One is that there's been reference to January 20th and I don't know how many people remember this, but in the past, there were real budget issues in our town for the schools when there were cutbacks from the state. And Jody, you would remember a lot more about this, but I know that there were questions about how are we going to pay for this? How are we going to pay for that? I share the group's concern that there will be less money coming from the government and any money we spend now might be better spent on hardcore educational imperatives. I'm sort of struck by that when most, many people do renovations in this town and I think most of us think about what is our budget before we start planning. And I don't know how this group comes up with a budget, like before you hire the experts. So like my gut feeling is that we don't have a lot of extra money in general. And I don't know, it just seems like schools just don't really think about what is the taxpayer of Hastings want to spend? What is the taxpayer, how many glass ceilings, ceiling entrances does the average taxpayer of this town want to fund before you hire experts? I don't have an answer to that. I did want to comment, follow up on two comments about plastic. There has been plastic found in brains recently in the olfactory bulb of brain, nanoplastics, microplastics. So the kids playing on these fields, I would imagine are being exposed to a lot of nanoparticles and it's getting into our brains now. Well, I guess we'll find out in 20 years what that did to the kids who played on the sports, on the turf fields. Just an idea for this question of lights. Fortunately, I don't live anywhere near these fields. If I did, I would be really upset at the conversation I'm hearing here tonight. This thing about 30-foot lights, 60-foot lights, where the houses are. I would suggest that you guys do a test, like why don't you get a pole that's 30 or 60 feet high? I'm actually serious. Put the lights in. I realize this would probably cost, I don't know, $5,000 maybe? And see how the neighbors feel about these lights that you, because you're, oh, I'm sorry, you're contemplating making major changes in their life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you students leave, this comment is for you guys. The student who made that great comment like, well, if you have a grass field that's perfect, sorry, 16 crossbar road, wouldn't that be an interesting comparison? I just want to highlight that one of the fields that's on offer, I really recommend that you look into it because you're looking at a grass field that's kept, maintained, basically perfectly without the need for intensive inputs from the janitorial or the groundskeeping staff of the school district. The drainage is whisked away through a special substrate, through drainage underneath the whole field, gets put into cisterns and then gets fed back deep underground so that the grassroots go down deep. So the grass is very sturdy and the fields are much more easily, much more easily kept at perfect playing level. So if you could imagine a perfect grass field, that would be kind of cool and it'd be nice to be breathing grass as opposed to plastic. I share both Arthy and Chloe's concern about plastics in the environment. Probably all our shoes with their rubber soles are kicking up nanoplastics that we're all breathing in this room. We don't know, right? There's all kinds of impacts. I get the point that while you're playing on turf field anyway, wherever you go, so why not have one here? Well, you're going to be practicing it on every day. So for me, I didn't come with prepared remarks because I'm really shy to speak in public, but I did want to highlight that for you guys, that it really, there is an alternative that everyone can look into and not looking into that, I think, is not due diligence. I also wanted to also underscore the fact that Hastings is a different kind of town and it's the reason why we chose to live here and it does things a little differently. I appreciate that about the town. Eventually, you might find that Hastings put in a grass field, a drain talent field or whatever, and that everyone else copies Hastings and they're all going to want to play here. Larchmont is putting one in municipally, not their school system, but the municipality of Larchmont is putting one in this year. So, you know, they're now ahead of us and that really irks me as chair of the Hastings Conservation Commission. Anyway, just wanted to make sure that was a highlighted point. There's other features about the drain talent fields that you guys can learn about which makes it, it's a Dutch product, you know, a little Dutch boy with a thumb in the wall. They know their water. They're making plans for climate change with floating islands and all kinds of things because they recognize the threat of climate change and not to embrace what that is for our community too and just to do business as usual. I think at this point in history is also kind of astounding to me that we wouldn't take that feature of putting more plastic on a large surface more seriously. Thank you. And go to drain talent fields. Put it under the softball field. Put it everywhere, you know? Go for it.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Greg Weiss from Two Rosedale Avenue. I'll be super brief because so much has been said. Just for history, I have 10 years of Little League coaching experience and one of the things that I've, you know, sort of instilled on my players was obviously to be the best athlete you can and the best teammate you can, but also to advocate for yourself. I just want to take a moment and say how proud I am of the students in this community for advocating and speaking up. I'm also, I'm also really proud to be in a community where people with all sorts of perspectives can come to a forum like this and spend three-plus hours of time really creating what I think is seeming to be an impossible decision for Alex and the board. I don't envy their decision. As a, you know, my daughter wanted to speak as well. I brought her home to do her homework. Appreciate you giving me the chance to get up again. I did want to say, even though I came with an intent to speak about athletics and how I do advocate for the students and their voice, I also think it's critically important that we realize that we're here not only for athletics, we're here for the school as well. And this bond is not just about the athletics, it's for the improvements to the school as well. And I just want to give airtime just to acknowledge that because 90% of the conversation's been about athletics, which I am passionate about. But thank you for putting together a proposal that not only cares about, you know, the students in school now that might enjoy this, but decades of future Hastings, just like the athletic fields will do. So I have nothing more to add than what's been said, but I'm just proud to be part of the community and proud of our students for advocating for what they believe is important and appreciate the further decision-making and discussion that we'll need to go into this weighing all that's been heard today. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we've come to the end of that. I just want to thank our whole community for being so constructive and it's really useful to hear all these different perspectives and I'm just so thankful that it is constructive. And I also want to point out that all of us have taken notes, the questions that have been raised, we're hopeful that we're going to get, same thing, we're going to work these back through a cycle into the Q and A, into FAQ. It's going to be posted online. Keep this thing rolling and be as open, transparent and as complete as possible. So thank you. Thank you.
Enrollment. Enrollment.
Oh, okay. Oh, can I?
During board comment.
Should I just say it?
Say it, just say it.
I just want to add one, we had a trustee who raised one issue. We had a trustee, I'm sorry, in case anybody wants to hear it.
Just get it on the record.
All right. In case anybody wants to hear, we had a trustee raise a question. Thank you. Thank you very much. We had a point that came up in several questions about declining enrollment. Just want to point out that we've had stable and slightly climbing enrollment in the middle school for many years, but we will add enrollment data as part of the FAQ even though it didn't come up as a specific question. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Thank you for staying.
Take a cookie. That's why I brought sugar, people.
You need one now.
Yeah. See? I was thinking ahead for you people.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I feel like we need like a little break.
I'm going to buy that espresso machine.
I'm going to get some water.
What's that?
I love, I love the.
There's a water cooler over there. Oh, it's out? Is it always out or we just don't know?
First of all. Okay.
Where's Maureen?
Right. Didn't love them as much.
I need water.
But I think it's like 19, 20.
Yes.
Challenging. I had a day like.
Public say then that I want a cookie? Please?
No, like I'm serious. Bring that box over here right now.
I'm so sorry to the audience out there.
The water fountain.
Didn't realize you were here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I forget where it is though, the water fountain.
One of the kids that was directing me there, but I was like, oh, we have to destroy.
Her son would know. Her son would know.
Oh, he's gone.
Her son knows where the.
No, she must have got it. Yeah.
Right.
I think so.
Outside, I don't think actually.
Silly old.
This way.
Were you looking for it? The bathroom?
Water.
No one's going to get water.
You couldn't see it, but felt.
Right, though, there is not a where.
Ever since then, I've been more protective about my.
Yeah.
Space and whatever, but I'm getting right where she was.
Yeah.
Mikes are still alive, yeah.
Spent too much time.
But you're on Burke side.
Yeah, it's very important.
I think that was.
Do you think we're going to go right back in in two seconds?
Do you need a minute?
No, no, we just getting water.
Okay.
Those are getting water.
Hi, thank you.
Right.
Like right now, don't you need to go home?
No, he's going to go.
Oh, where did he play early?
Huh? No, it's not an early decision. He just, no, he got, today he finds out about.
But it's not, it's not an early decision. It's just like.
I think they have, I think it's because it's an honors college, but it's early action.
Oh, yeah. It's exciting.
Yeah, hopefully.
It requires mitigation, so there's still, it's not like it's done, they'll work at light.
Right. That's what this.
And then have a mitigation piece of it.
What does that mean?
I'm not sure.
So if you're asking about, so one of the things.
Last, just thinking of last time because, okay, another thing I think I should talk about was.
Mikes are live, by the way.
They put the goalposts on the field. They haven't put it once been used here.
Actually, when I walked around Burke last week, I was like, oh, they're goalposts here. So what, one of the things that they were talking about, so it's all deciduous trees through there. One of the things that was talked about was a thin screen of tall evergreens. So whatever the height of the light is, just to be tall enough to intercept the angle to the house. So this is an example, that's one of the things.
We're out of water. We're still live, everybody, just, you know.
I didn't see any evergreens, though. They look like they're all, there are some. Oh, there's a little, you're right, there's a little short, you're right, you're right. Right. They're stunted, though, yeah.
No, no, fair.
I did see them. They are very, they're very short. Yeah.
That's it. See, I told you. Asking, we shall receive.
It's fine, I mean, we'll make a note of it. That's something we can ask them to do in analysis.
I wish, but I wish you guys would come and like into our backyard, not just walk around Burke State and just see what it looks like from our perspective.
Let's get to showing what we did that recently. It's going to send you a water note. You can take it to whomever.
I'll be, I mean, I wouldn't go uninvited, but I'll be happy to come take a look. Yeah. If I'm creeping along, like.
No, I mean, I could.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine.
One.
Yeah.
We're going to restart. We should restart, right?
Alex, we sugar start.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. That's fair enough. We'll take a look. We're going to put hands to show.
And it's just as part of like, it's a good general because it's just be so.
We will address that for sure.
And I, the other, just kind of, I, two fields and a lot of that was one of my things. Anyhow.
Right. Thank you, though. Don't worry.
I'm going to put it in a letter.
Yeah, no.
I needed like six minutes, obviously.
Better you guys than me. I don't need to take these home. Keep on circling. No, no, good. I don't, I don't want to take them, people.
Nice to meet you.
Tell LuLu the Lisa Henley, they know me as Miss H.
Yeah, we're returning from the cookie break. One second.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. No, no. All right, returning to our meeting after public comment. There are the reports from the superintendent. Are there anything, anything you want to pull out from this?
I want, I just would urge the board to dig through this. It's a wonderful report substantially put together by a wonderful communications expert supplemented by Melissa D. There's a lot there, both the narrative on look-ins as well as some wonderful photographs. And I also would mention that Thursday evening, we have the annual senior citizen concert and dinner, excuse me, Wednesday evening, tomorrow evening, Wednesday evening, from four to six. The, it's a nice tradition we do for our senior residents. So if any board members around, come and greet and say hello, that would be a lovely thing. That's a tradition that has been on here for a while. Maureen Carvillo does a lot on it. Actually, Melissa Horace D was in Engine Room on it, so we're going to keep it going. So, all right.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to administrative report from Dr. Chisamansky. I saw stuff posted. Anything you want to pull out?
Just in the interest of time, committed it to the written record, more good things to come around restorative practices, authentic learning, and also an FMS ELA inquiry in the near future.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to business items, I would note that business item five is the resolution that we heard the presentation on for the, to authorize land associates to proceed with the SECR process. So are there any questions or comments regarding business items one through five?
Is that the SECR process, you said?
I'm just, yeah, I'm just noting that that's, we're voting on that now as part of this. Yeah, it's not a separate document, so it's, you see, it's one, two, three, four, but the fifth one is the resolution.
Okay, so could I make comments?
Of course.
Specific to, kind of like some of the things that I heard.
Sure.
All right, I'll be, I'll try to be brief here. Someone mentioned that we are, the board is in this kind of unenviable position of having to align needs with balancing costs and what the public is willing to pay for, which is a very interesting kind of dynamic and we are sort of in that role and trying to figure stuff out and the, and the.
Right, and that's what this.
And then have a mitigation piece of it. I'm not sure.
So, if you're asking about, so one of the things.
Last, just thinking of last time, because, okay, another thing I think I should talk about was.
Mikes are live, by the way.
Which one? They put the goalposts on the field. They haven't put it once, but used.
We're bringing a new term of water.
Oh, he's dressing in the water.
Okay, hi, Jess.
Actually, when I walked around Burke last week, I was like, oh, their goalpost here. So, what, what, one of the things that they were talking about, so, it's all deciduous trees, do they? One of the things that was talked about was a thin screen of tall evergreens. So, whatever the height of the light is, just to be tall enough to intercept the angle to the house. Example, that's one of the things. We're, we're out of water, aren't we? Yeah, we're, we're still live, everybody, just, you know. I didn't see any evergreens, though. They look like they're all, there are some. Oh, there's a little, you're right, there's a little short, you're right, you're right, right. They're stunted, though, yeah. No, no, fair, fair. I did see them. They are very, they're very short. Yeah.
That's it. See, I told you. Asking, we shall receive.
It's fine, I mean, we'll make a note of it. That's something we can ask them to do in analysis.
I wish, but I wish you guys would come, like, into our backyard, not just walk around Burke State and just see what it looks like from our perspective.
He's gonna send you a water note. You can take it to whomever. I'll be, I mean, I wouldn't go uninvited, but I'll be happy to come take a look. Yeah. If I'm creeping along, like. No, no, that's fine. That's fine. One. Yeah. We're gonna restart. We should restart, right?
Alex, we sugar start.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. That's fair enough. We'll take a look. We're gonna put hands up. We're gonna, we will address that, for sure. Right. Thank you, though. Don't worry.
I'm gonna put it in the letter.
Yeah, no.
I needed like six minutes, obviously.
Better you guys than me. I don't need to take these home. Keep on circling. No, no, good. I don't, I don't wanna take them, people.
Nice to meet you.
Tell, tell Lou Lou the Lisa Henley, they know me as Miss H.
Yeah, we're returning from the cookie break. One second.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. No, no, no. All right, returning to our meeting after public comment. There are the reports from the superintendent. Are there anything, anything you wanna pull out from this? I, I want, I just would urge the board to dig through this. It's a wonderful report, substantially put together by a wonderful communications expert supplemented by Melissa D. There's a lot there, both the narrative on look-ins as well as some wonderful photographs. And I also would mention that Thursday evening, we have the annual senior citizen concert and dinner, excuse me, Wednesday evening, tomorrow evening. Tomorrow evening, Wednesday evening, from four to six. The, it's a nice tradition we do for our, our senior residents. So, if any board members around, come and greet and say hello, that would be a lovely thing. That's a tradition that has been on here for a while. Marine Carbella does a lot on it. Actually, Melissa Horace D. was in engine room on it, so we're gonna keep it going. All right? Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to administrative report from Dr. Chisamansky. I saw stuff posted. Anything you wanna pull out?
Just in the interest of time, committed it to the written record. More good things to come around restorative practices, authentic learning, and also an FMS ELA inquiry in the near future.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to business items, I would note that business item five is the resolution that we heard the presentation on for the, to authorize land associates to proceed with the SECRE process. So, are there any questions or comments regarding business items one through five?
Is that the SECRE process, you said?
I'm just noting, yeah, I'm just noting that that's, we're voting on that now as part of this. Yeah, it's not a separate document, so it's, you see, it's one, two, three, four, but the fifth one is the resolution.
Okay, so, could I make comments?
Of course.
Specific to, kinda like some of the things that I heard?
Sure.
All right, I'll be, I'll try to be brief here. Someone mentioned that we are, the, the board is in this kinda unenviable position of having to align needs with, with balancing costs and what the public is willing to pay for, which is a very interesting kinda dynamic, and we are sort of in that role and trying to figure stuff out, and the, and the process and how we talk about it is very scripted in the sense that we have to be in an open meeting, et cetera. I just wanted to kinda say, I support it. I said that last time, and I've spent my career in federal service looking out for taxpayer dollars, stretching a budget, and getting your money's worth. So, it really does matter to me that we are, you know, really looking at the costs and making sure there's kinda no extra bills and whistles, let's say. I also concur with some of the comments about it was nice to have the discussion, very different aspects of, aspects of different arguments, civil, and I think it, it's very representative of, of Hastings, and I, I love that. It was nice to see that and hear everyone's participation. One note, just, you know, to kinda clarify, this is the approval to move forward with the environmental review process. Maureen isn't here, but I just wanted to clarify, because a couple of people, like, have really kinda felt like the process, and it is going very fast, but there is still some time, albeit a small window, that we can, like, explore different aspects. So, this is kind of like, keep things moving, get the environmental going, and the environmental review process will also look at impacts to things like lighting. I know there was a number of people here talking about lighting, and it does look at lighting, and it does allow for mitigation if impact is decided. So, I just wanted to kind of at least elate people's fears that, you know, you're moving too fast, your vote means you're not paying attention to me. And the other thing I wanted to say is between this vote and, and the vote in May with the budget, right, we are still kind of collecting input and responding, and it will feed the FAQs. So, I think that input is still very critical, so like, people shouldn't think this is the last time. It's an ongoing process, and we wanna kinda be informed about how to best get concerns, you know, and, and responses to things that are of, of big concern. For me, the fields, there is passionate arguments on both sides, and the intent, I believe, is that we would put it up as a vote, that's sort of a menu, and kinda let the public decide. So, I think, I just wanted to make that, like, we're saying, okay, this is the chunk of work that we're considering. It may or may not be this or that. It's allowing the process to proceed, but the vote itself could be, I want, you know, a field that is.
Could be. That's something we have to decide, how we're gonna present it.
But I know we've kinda kicked that around, and that would basically allow the public to, kinda the vote mat, you know, is gonna decide that aspect of it. To me, it's about, you know, kind of culling out needs versus wants, and I think that they've, that the architects and the companies involved have done a good job of really kind of getting it down from a massive, multi-tiered, phased, you know, project that could be upwards, I think, one hundred and twenty at some point, we said, if everything was done at once, right, to starting really with the sixty-three or so, and now kinda getting down. And I think they've done a good job of listening, the programming, et cetera. It's about function and flow, and I think the cafeteria is gonna be a game changer. I think it also is about bringing the buildings up to code, and, you know, I think it was Nathan that mentioned, you know, the programming for many of our classes, I think it's twenty out of twenty-four or twenty-six are not up to kinda standards. And the most vulnerable students are impacted in that, too. So, you know, thirty percent of the students being in fifty percent of the space is, is kinda what you think about, but we're not at code. And this, a lot of the things that are coming about as part of the project, it, it's about code and meeting code, the mechanical spaces. Parking is about code. So, some of the things, when you do a project, code becomes, you know, the things that are required to, to add on. To me, the other thing is about why now, you know, for me, the question of answering the urgency of why now is we have not done a project in many, many decades, and projects don't usually get better without doing anything, right? Like, they're only gonna get worse. It's gonna get more costly. It could actually be a dangerous situation, which we saw happen in, in an incident in the school, you know, as they were doing some due diligence, we realized, jeez, that could've been much, much worse. That could've fallen down. There's other kind of implications on the insurance not covering rain events and things like that. So, to me, the why now is all about that. It's not gonna get better, and the state will currently reimburse, I think it's forty-seven percent, Maureen clarified, and, you know, with all the changes that are coming and people are concerned about that, that is almost for sure gonna go down dramatically. So, to me, it's like strike while the iron is hot. That's a, that's a benefit, in my view, that reimbursement aspect. So, I just wanted to give kind of, call my thoughts on why I support it, and the fact that this is the okay for the environmental piece, but we still wanna hear everyone's thoughts and kind of address FAQs so that we know how to best kind of, you know, put, put the facts out there for the May votes. I just wanted to mention all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is, this is board comment time, or?
No. There's comments on the business, we're in the business items, but commenting. Yeah. Well, business items, any business items.
Because the approval for the SECRE is one of the business items.
Number five.
I see. Okay. Yes, I, I don't think we, as a board, or necessarily as a community, know what the SECRE thing is. I mean, we know, we've been talking about it a little bit, but I'm happy that you clarified that that's what we're voting on. We're voting for this proposal to move to that level, and people, I hope, will understand that this is an environmental review, and that will give us important information.
It's also necessary. I mean, we can't do it without.
Right. I'm happy that you cleared up the, there's, there's a lot of false narrative around enrollment. I, I received a text saying, why are we doing this? Enrollment is low and test scores are bad. That, that didn't resonate with me as, as true, so I wanna just make sure everyone knows, because it was a little noisy, we don't have declining enrollment right now. It seems, it's very important that the communities on the periphery of the Burke be very included in conversation, that there are intentional meetings set. I'm sure that there's zoning stuff and, you know, like, buildings thing in towns, ordinances and issues that will come up, but we really have to think about the people on the periphery, and what the one woman shared, that she moved in and there was a forest, and then, you know, a few months later, there was no forest. That's important, and I, I do think that there is some skepticism about the firms we've chosen in terms of really thinking about those peripheral neighbors. And I, I find it, I just wanna say, it is a little frustrating to hear, I, I'm so happy that everyone came. I love a vibrant meeting. It's a little frustrating, though, to hear, you know, this is the first I'm seeing of this, or I need more information, as though we're hiding it. I mean, it's out there, right, and this is, there's been many meetings, and so I wanna encourage the public to continue to come, to continue to review presentations and, and ask questions. It's so healthy and important, and because everything has been shared a lot. Also, I'm, I, there is the, this expert in town who is a sales representative for Drain Talent. Drain Talent? Is that what it's called, Turf Talent?
Yeah, I think Turf Talent and, and the, and the product, I believe, is Drain Tal- like, I think, yeah.
They have two products.
Turf Talent's the company.
Based on what Aaron, the representative of the company, has said, is that our chosen consultants have not really had a conversation with him. They've like put him off, and that's not cool, because.
But that's not true, Teresa. Well, I know, can I just speak to that, only because what I know, so, you know, I'm just, no, but I'm saying that the other gentleman wasn't here tonight, Bob, who has been, works for the LA Group, who is the landscape architects that are working, like, designing the projects. So, although Matt, they're working under the auspices of LAN, he had been in touch with them, and he is really the person with the expertise on the, on the fields, right, the landscape architect. Now, Matt, of course, is overseeing the project, but, you know, it was appropriate that the person closest to the design and the under, you know, the workings be, and again, Matt has the expertise also to design a field, but LA Group, that's their expertise. So, we, the district, had directed, or had asked. Now, we did meet with this gentleman last year.
Can I just, sorry?
What do you mean? There has been conversation, that's why.
We're just kinda getting into contractual stuff involving our partners.
Yes.
That really would be for executive session. Yeah, I mean, you could go into an executive session right now to clarify this matter, or at the end of the meeting. This is one, like, because it's a contractual issue. I, I wanna be highly respectful of everybody involved in this process. I wanna be respectful of the people representing a particular firm. I wanna be respectful of our contractors, and be, just in the sense of what could be shared. We could do some backfilling in that way related to contractual issues.
I, I just wanna say, it seems like there are community members who feel like we haven't given this company the time of day, so, I'm just saying that.
The district met with them, though, last year. I mean, in a public session at, at a facilities meeting, and we did evaluate, you know, at that time, and again, yeah, we did, we met with them, and, you know, I had spoken to him, and as did Director Facilities, and again, I think even beyond this evening, so I think, you know, currently, we're still looking at a turf field for a variety of reasons, but of course, we're still looking and speaking about the natural, we have many, many fields that are natural grass surfaces. So, it's not to say there may not be an opportunity to look at the, I'm just throwing this out there, the softball field, or something else, if there was thinking that you wanted to, because it's really, that would be maybe a field in which would be an appropriate match for something of that, or the baseball field. I just wanna mention the lower baseball field, and I, because it came up tonight with the sinkholes, and I'm going off topic, but just so the board knows and the public knows, and what Christina had reported, and, you know, we've talked a lot about sinkholes, which have been a continuous problem for us at both Burke and Reynolds, quite frankly. The, the baseball field, the current baseball field in which, you know, we play our games, it's been that, that was built in the eighties, I believe, and it has not been touched. I mean, we did a little bit of improvement work, which Christina referred to, and that was just out of pure terrible, like, it was like very uneven, a lot of divots and all the rest, because it has not been upgraded since nineteen eighty-somethings. Now, that being said, it looks pretty good, but some of those conditions, I just wanted to, I know for safety purposes, when someone brings up that there are sinkholes, I'm thinking, you're like, oh my goodness, you know, of course, and I know we've reported out on those, but I do want you to know, that is a, a problem we do combat, not only there, but other places. And as Christina properly reported, you know, many years ago in the seventies or whenever, the case may be, and I know that's not only here and in a lot of construction projects back when, I guess, things weren't overseen the way they should've been, you know, there were things buried, and, you know, and then, like, the trees and all the rest were used for fills. So, we do, we do find those conditions there. So, I, I think, it makes me think, like, can we do the baseball field, too? No, but I mean, it is a real concern in that particular location as well.
Definitely.
But we're on top of it.
Thank you.
We tried to.
Hey, Beck, any comments, questions on?
Just to clarify for the resolution that we're voting on to proceed with this, with the SECRE, because I was asked this by someone, I, so I just wanted it to be public, that this is to do a complete environmental review, right, Maureen?
Yeah, of, of the areas of disturbance.
Would give us the option to, it would provide for any of the options that we might consider. We, doesn't mean.
We're not locked in.
What we're considering ultimately for the bond, but it will cover everything by doing this.
Correct.
And we'll get it started, because it takes some time.
Yes, it takes.
And we need to have it done in order to go ahead with the bond.
Yeah. Can I just make one clarification for the board, and then, just in case there's any change in thinking from, you know, the previous meeting, if you were to consider doing a separate two turf fields, we would have to let them know that, because that would be a different SECRE review, right? Because it would require, now, which you're authorizing, because of course, and, you know, beyond that, they do need to do the scope work, because there's a cost in getting a SECRE down, right, professional services and reviews and attorney's fees and coordinated reviews with potential other agencies that may be impacted. So, there is a cost, so, you know, really giving them the scope of work's important, but if there was any thinking, I'm just throwing this out, not saying you are thinking this, to, for them to also review, because it has to be done, you, if you were to just do.
How much extra would it cost?
I don't know, because, I mean, I, let's just, I'll throw it like an extra, I'm making this up now, off the top of my head, like, say, another ten or fifteen thousand dollars to, or, I'm just gonna say ten, possibly, to say, you know, we want you to consider having two turf fields, or they need, or if there were like two designs at Burke that you would like to be investigated, because putting a natural softball field in a Burke is a different review process than putting a synthetic. So, if there's anything, we would direct them to do the work. What you're doing is authorizing, we have a contract with them, you're authorizing them to do this work based upon a forty-six million dollar project, of which three areas, which will require the SECRE review, the addition and the, the installation of a artificial turf field, lights, and of course, the softball field, that would also trigger.
Right, can you clarify? So, we're giving them authorization, they're gonna start the process. Is, do we know what the length of time before they would say, oh, now we're handing it in? Was that?
Yeah, I think it's, it's indicated on the schedule. I think it's typically, is it like a sixty-day, sixty-day cycle?
So, they're gonna be working on it for sixty days before they send it to New York State?
Well, they, 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 you adopt it. They, they, they make the determination based upon a coordinator review and expertise. I mean, I think it ultimately goes to New York State, but it's not as though, it, it's not as though it goes, like, they would make the, they would make the decision based upon their evaluation, and then the board would adopt the resolution of either a negative deceleration, like a type-two filing or a type-one. They're, they're different, depending on the outcome. You know, assuming this type of project, right, would typically fall under type-two. I mean, we're assuming a negative, I mean, just, not that I'm assuming.
Right.
I'm not making assumptions based on the project, but I think based upon the project, it would typically fall into that category, you know.
So, I mean, the reality is, the importance of the SECRE vote at this point is that a required process takes time, and you need that lead time, but you, 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 you can't go north later. You can't add to it, because then you have to put in a whole nother SECRE process. So, if, if the board were hearing enough interest and had enough thought that you might adjust later to a second field, what Maureen is saying, it'd be better to put that in now. You can pull back.
Yeah, it is sixty days.
But you can't add.
Environment analysis of two options for fields. One would be the two-field option, the other would be the one before you, but then you have all the information you need to then make that final decision on, on the, the bond resolution. So.
That's what I'm saying.
You may say, there are other places, because it's about two million for another field, a little north of that, and you may say, we're gonna find that two million somewhere else somehow, or there's enough commitment to it, running out the cost per household, do you say a bond of forty-eight million, forty-nine million is worth going for? But if you don't authorize a SECRE now for that, you gotta, that puts the whole field effort on hold while you redo that, so.
You would have to do a separate one for that.
Yeah. So, um, thank you for bringing that up, because I think some of the things we heard today were really impactful for my decision on this. I believe, like, some notes that I took, the equity concerns were not addressed with the natural turf softball field. The softball players came out. They also got the field hockey players to come out. Equity has now been raised about lights, right, being represented, even if there are grass field, there should be lights on those grass fields. Equity has been raised up around, not only gender now, but age as well. So, the conversation for me about student experience, which I know that, you know that I bring up student experience as like a motivating factor for me all the time, is that I believe that two fields is the right model now, based on what I'm hearing, and I would like to move forward from my personal opinion on the SECRE on two fields with lights. We can scale back from there. If the community does push back, we can always go back to, back a model, but I think we should bring it to the model that students are advocating for. It sounds like there's adult, adults advocating for turf as well. We don't know which way that's gonna go, and we don't know how we're gonna split the bond, but to me, the equity issue is the most important towards gender in sports, and I believe that the girls feel highly unrepresented when it comes to, and they believe that they are not going to have access to this turf field, and I think that we should give them two fields. To, to, just to be clarified, it, just to put something on the table, you would then be saying, we actually, for the fields, have two, two models we want reviewed. The current one, because I think, if I'm understanding this correctly, the current one, the most recent one, where we'd go back to then pick up one that enabled you to have the two fields. Unless you can put two, two fields and a, and a grass softball field on one, and you could hold one. Well, but I.
Yeah.
You could do that.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, we can, certainly, I mean, I think there's, I think what's important, and I think where, and I, I mean, I don't wanna speak out of turn here with the architects being gone, I think, whether it be a turf softball field and a turf multipurpose field, or two turf all multipurpose fields, or one turf multipurpose field with a combination baseball, softball, diamond, it's really about having two turf fields that the environmental review is going to be, because I don't think it's so much as whether it be a softball or multipurpose, because it's really to do with the fact that you. or multipurpose, because it's really to do with the fact they need to put in a retention system for both.
Second retention pond.
A sep, a, yes, and, and then the evaluation of another set of lights. So, whether underneath it, I, I think it's, I think you can kind of go forth without knowing specifically what that second field is.
I think we should know specifically, right?
No, but, but.
I think it's the retention piece.
You're making a good point. The point is, you can sort of have a proxy.
Yes.
Bid of two turf.
Correct.
Because it.
This is not about the money, this is about the retention.
Without having to specify exactly how it gets done, to your point.
I feel like this turf softball field is half the size of a multipurpose field. I don't know if that has to do with, in the SECR, when it comes to like cisterns and water basins and all that.
But you know what may, but I think if we direct them to say, you know, this analysis, and I can clarify this with them, I think, you know, to your point, the retention basin for a smaller surface may be different.
It is smaller.
So, is, is that, I just, you know, but I do think that even ultimately, in that evaluation of the SECR, say, if they're doing it for that second field, let's say, in this scenario, it's a softball field, they're still going to be able to determine if, if say, if that expanded to another large second multipurpose field that had a diamond in it or a softball slash multipurpose field type space, I think it would give them enough information, because it's really, I think, once the tank, if they find a place where they can, it would just have to be a larger tank. So, I kind of could say to them, like, this is what we're looking for, but in that analysis, in the location, would it be feasible to increase the size of the?
I think for the purpose of, right now, for voting, we need to make it as broad as possible.
Yeah, so I think what.
That it could accommodate what you're saying.
That's exactly it, Jody, that's what I'm asking the board for, yeah.
Certainly it depends if we don't do this.
Right.
It's just more to say, do, are we directing them to say, kind of to your point, that flexible kind of, you know, I think we have kind of two things we're thinking of, and say, you know, two turf versus one turf, one natural, and I, I guess, should I include the lights in that or not? Because that, again, the SECR for two lights is different than one lights.
I guess it's cost-effective to include everything, and it'll give us a good environmental read on it, and we can pull it back, you know, it's good to know, it's an analytical step, so let's get the analysis of all the options, really. I, I agree with that. It's a fair, fair thing.
Yeah.
So, do we need, so can we still vote on it, just by?
Yeah, no, you're still voting, so what they said tonight is, you can see the, the business language is, is pretty, it's not vague, it's just because, again, you are authorizing them, because this is going to cost us money to authorize them to do so.
Not specifying.
So, that's why telling them that they're looking at, you know, now potentially, it's really just a matter of, you know, that, that scope of work either being a grass or synthetic with lights. So, I don't think the cost of doing it for that additional service is going to be significant, but we do need to direct them. I don't want to, you know, so we'll put that in the record, what Melissa's typing, like, the board's directing them to do both of those, so that it's, you know, legally.
So, let's, I think, let's gather some more comments, and then we can proceed with, you know, I think where we're ending up. But anybody else have any other comments? I guess, well, let's stick to the, let's stick to the resolution, just to see if anybody.
And it is sixty days that it takes.
Okay, sixty days.
Unless it's a coordinator review, which sometimes could take longer, but they would update that. It will be coordinator review, but meaning if the other party takes, needs a longer time.
Okay. I would just say, yeah, I'm in favor of finding out more.
May I ask one more question here? Obviously, correctly, there's a lot of attention to what the board is doing right now, and I'm wondering if the resolution should be modified a wee bit, so that the record shows that it's right now, the Quality Review Act, I'm willing to call Matt if you want, I have his number here, Quality Review Act process to incorporate, and there are three clear parts of this, the farragut complex work, then the athletic fields work to potentially include two fields and two lights, and then the building condition work.
Well, the building condition work doesn't require a SECR.
Okay, so in those two, though, but I wanted to be in some language in there with the understanding that this is not yet the final decision on the bond referendum, or something like that.
Yeah, no, they get that, yeah.
But I just saw the language is there, so that there's not a thought, we had all this comment, then the board went and had this.
No, and that's all we want, because, again, it's, it's pretty much authorizing the service, that it's under contract we currently have with them, but they, you know, we need to do it formally, because we are authorizing professional service.
That's what I'm saying, but if the, specify the resolution a wee bit more, so the.
I think in the minutes, we would reflect what the board's directing us to do, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it would be the farragut complex renovations.
Correct, the addition, it's not the renovation, just addition.
And then, the athletic field complex improvements, athletic field improvements, up to and including two fields and lights.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think they're going to have to, I think they'll evaluate it both, but I think if you evaluate it for turf, it's, it's going to cover the grass component of it, yeah.
Okay, all right. And then for you as a board, if there's someone saying, whoa, whoa, what were they? Didn't you just approve two field? No, you, as a board, you've approved the analysis.
That's why you're trying to be super clear again. I'm like, Bill, I got you. No, it's true, I know we're talking about a lot of things.
I think it's very healthy for the board right now to consider, as it looks later, a referendum vote.
That's true.
Is it possible to go back to consider two fields?
And I do want.
And I may get there, but I, but I think there, you heard that a lot tonight, you also heard the concern, so I just want to, in the public record, have the board say, we are looking at this, so we have all our options, but we may pull back.
Right.
Because, here's the point, what was posted and presented tonight did not have two fields.
Correct.
Right, that's the only thing, that makes me kind of feel like we're doing this on the fly, or that it's going to, I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying that we are, but I'm saying the perception will be like that, because what, what has been like listed, you know, even on our timelines and things, sometimes we've deviated from that, and then I think it gives, it gives the impression then to people, for example, what tonight people thought we were looking at was actually the scope of the bond itself. That's how it was listed in the old documents. And, and I understand that, but I'm saying, for people who are not following it with any detail that we are, and here, having had this conversation, we want to just impress upon people that while this, all that we're authorizing is an investigation, the findings of which will actually help inform the decision we make as to what gets included in that bond. So, if now we're saying, we're open to the thought of including a second field, which would be with lights for the softball students, that's just something that we are incorporating for in an investigation. It's not something that we are actually deliberating about, or that's something that's going to be incorporated into the bond in its final analysis and be put forth for a vote. We are not at that point.
So, this will all be in the interim minutes, so it'll be documented there, but I was also wondering, all the amazing FAQ work, it could be in there, and also just like, front and center, like, update status.
Oh, that's true.
Clearly communicated in like multiple methods, so people know that we understand that feelings could be out there, but we are being as transparent as possible, and also responding to the voices of the community.
Right, and the one thing I just wanted, just the last and beyond the SECR review, I think it's important, so that a lot of the things are conceptual with Burke, right? So, even the fact, when they bring the first plan, I'm talking about the master plan, not the plan we're talking about right now, but the, you know, if you were to do everything, hundred car park, you know, all the, the kind of, sort of master plan, very high-level conceptual plan, I mean, quite frankly, there are things in which, say, like, in doing this investigation, so they find they can't do things at times too, so that's, you know, there's a possibility they couldn't find the space based about on bedrock to have enough for ten areas to hold the water, that it may not even be possible. So, I think it's a good thing to know also, to say, like, you know, in, in the event that we're not, if we weren't able to get the space necessary to, you know, because some people say, do it all turf, and I can tell you a hundred percent, we wouldn't have the space to have the retention for that. And then, not that I want to go, and I don't think anyone has a question, because I think we've addressed why we weren't looking at Reynolds Field at previous meetings, correct?
Right.
Because I know it was brought up tonight, and maybe we add that to the FAQ.
I think a one-line answer is probably helpful.
Right, I mean, Reynolds has existing drainage issues underneath it that make it impossible for us to transform that to a turf field.
Might I read you some suggested language for the resolution? Because then your minutes will also go in more detail, but I think this wordsmithing right now is important for the public record. So, it'd be, resolution off, so the existing listing here, comma, after process, providing for an investigation of the farragut complex renovation and addition, comma, and up to two turf fields and lights, up to.
Okay.
All right, so then.
Two lights.
Right, but the word keys are providing for an investigation of the farragut, so capital F, capital C complex, capital renovation or capital in addition, you said, right? Comma.
Correct.
And up to two turf fields with lights.
And, and I think it's, and whatever parking, because I think that may be part of the disturbance area, which, I mean, we could say farragut, yes. I, I think the field, I think the parts you're specifying is the, the part in which it's extremely important to understand what we're doing in the investigation.
And I know, I mean, it's giving more detail, but then.
We could just say the parking.
But then you as a board, it's very clear what you voted on and authorizing, if you're comfortable with, with that language for resolution. Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bill, that language you were just referencing, is it on board docs under business items?
Yeah, if you look, if you look in this item five.
Okay, because we were like, we can't see, we didn't know what you were referring, because it wasn't posted for us.
He was making it a little, with a little more specificity, because I think initially we were going to tell them to follow, yeah.
It's, it's in.
Yeah, she just refreshed it, yeah.
Oh, meaning, has it been added yet?
Melissa did it already.
I think probably now.
She just added it.
She did it.
She just added it.
Yeah, that was in the moment.
Right, that's what I'm saying, something, sometimes things happen in real time, that you're not, like, actually able to.
But is it?
Yeah, that makes sense. It's like a not-to-exceed, so we want to do as massive a, you know, you know, look at the totality, and it might get less, right?
And I guess, I mean, how, and again, I think that gives us enough flexibility, but would we, we would specify the softball, rather than like a multipurpose softball slash something else? And the only reason I say that is, if we're going to put lights on the softball field, I'd be concerned that there'd be inequity, then issue with baseball, yeah.
I mean, for me, what's coming for me is the mixed use, because of the field hockey players, that came today, and they're only just opening the door for other students to, to come in. So, once they all catch wind that the softball team advocated, and they're almost getting what they want, all the other teams are going to show up, and then maybe even teams that are not even involved with this, you know, tennis might come in and be like, where are our tennis courts?
Yes, they were near those.
I'm curious that football and men's soccer, or boy's soccer did not show up today. I thought that was interesting, or lacrosse.
They already get what they want.
The coach was here, but he took us in the office.
There is nobody.
Yeah.
Well, I think those are the two sports, and not, because I think, as the, you know, our young students or students stated this evening, the two sports that currently have the worst playing conditions are field hockey and softball, and that's a fact, you know, so, because neither, you know, field hockey kind of borrows their field from the baseball team, and I'm sure the baseball, the baseball team's not happy about that either, because it does have the reverse impact on their, their playing condition, and then softball is softball where they are located, so.
Yeah, that's true, all right, that's true. All right.
Not to belabor the point, but it, we're still not seeing it under business items.
I don't see it.
Alex's.
You can see it?
Yeah.
Did you refresh?
Okay, I did refresh.
Addition and up to two turf fields with lights, providing for an investigation of the farragut complex renovations and addition, and up to two turf fields with lights.
Okay.
So, any other questions or comments regarding business items one through five? Just a quick question, Maureen. Who is, who is Joel Dean?
Joel Dean, so Joel Dean is a neighbor of ours. He, he and his family have resided on Hopkey Avenue, his, and they have provided this, you know, this donation to the school pretty much every year for years. I, I believe, I'm just looking, is it for trees? Is it, because I've never, is it, or is it for the students?
Scholarship?
Oh, scholarships, so they've done both, right? So, they've done, yeah, so they have provided scholarships to students, yeah, eleventh-grade students, social studies students, and that, that's been as, you know, for a very, I feel like if it's not every year, it's like every other year, they're, they're providing that, you know?
That's wonderful, thank you. Yeah, it is, thank you to that family.
Thank you.
Yes.
They get acknowledged at graduation or something.
Um.
It's given out.
Yeah, he's done this kind of every year, yeah.
Scholarship ceremony.
Oh, because it's in, well, it's an eleventh grade scholarship, so it's a little different than a graduating senior, and it's, his dad was a social studies teacher in Yonkers, I believe, so he does it to kind of honor his dad, and yeah.
It's nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very nice guy.
Any other questions or comments, one through five? Is there a resolution to improve, to approve business items one through five?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Moving on to placement services for CSE and CPSC, are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve our placement services for CSE and CPSC? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Moving on to personnel, are there any questions or comments regarding our appointments or amendments?
I guess I'd like to.
Sure.
Two people who are retired, or retiring currently, who, just two? Yeah.
Yep.
Sorry. Who are also appointing as per diem substitutes. So, first I'll mention Jeanette Coker, who's been the director of guidance.
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years.
We can't hear you.
Oh, the mic, yeah.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, so the first is Jeanette Coker, who's the director of guidance, she's been here eighteen years, and she has just been, um, someone who has become so engaged in the high school in her, in her position as director of guidance, working with other guidance counselors, working with other administrators, in the way that, times when you need teamwork, I think she's someone who steps in, she's a real team player, and it's sad to see her go. I mean, she's one of many people who've left over the past few years, who are retiring, and I think she was somebody who really gave her heart and soul to the kids of Hastings, and ran a very good guidance department, so I think we'll miss her. I know we'll miss her. And Melissa Hardesty, did we speak about Melissa at the other meeting?
Yeah, I think you cried. Think you teared up a little.
We did. Anyway, I guess we're hiring her back as an assistant, as a per diem substitute, but.
Well, they're going to help with the AP tests, they wanted to make sure that the AP, they're really both involved in testing and testing coordination and AP test administration, so they, they are, that's in particular why they, they both, you know, wanted to make sure that that went out, went off without a hitch for the students this year.
So, it's great that they're willing to come back and do that.
Yes.
So, it's sad, farewell.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I was trying to say about Ms. Hardesty, sad to see her go, you know, it's, it was[1618.25] I was trying to say about Ms. Hardisty, sad to see her go, you know, it's, it was very interesting coming up through the schools with my kids, because, you know, when they're, when they're little, and everything is so sort of stage managed, and gentle, and soft, and she was kind of a useful yin yang to that, you know, like brought some dose of reality, like before you go out in the world, like, here's the straight dope, like, here are the standards we set, and it's just, it was refreshing, you know, so that's a quality that I certainly remember from my kind of upbringing in school, so I appreciate it from my kids, and I wish her well, and Ms. Coker as well.
She's a, like I said, she's a tough cookie, but she's-
I feel like she's going to be, or she told me I'll see you tomorrow, so she must be, yeah, she's coming tomorrow.
I stepped out, I credited you and Melissa Hardisty, no, you were here, and I'd mentioned the seniors' dinner.
I wasn't here.
Oh, you weren't here, yeah, I celebrated you and Hardisty for being the dynamic duo.
Nice, well, she's not going to be here for that, but she's going to be here during the day, and like, because she has nothing, she has something else in the evening, yeah. I know, a little worried about that, not worried about it, I'm just like thinking, gosh, it's tomorrow night, I was thinking about that earlier.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Good shooting, Tex, all right, minutes, is, any questions or comments regarding our minutes? These would have been from our December 4th meeting. No, is there a motion to approve our minutes from December 4th meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Policy, these are, I saw there's a committee report in here, these are first reads, right, the actual policies, where are they? They're farther down?
10 is the committee report, and 11 is your-
Oh, that's where, that's where it is, okay. Does anybody want to hit any highlights from, from the policy report?
I can recollect.
It's in the, it's in the report.
Yeah, exactly.
As long as you can recollect it in the report, that's fine.
Sylvia, do you want to make, or, I mean, I can make one comment on behalf of you, and then you can correct it if you want.
Sure, I love to be the editor, that's my strength.
There are five here, first reads, but in particular, policy 5100 is, a lot of work has gone into that, and it's, it's good work and the correct work. The board, your previous board had seen it last spring, and there were different questions about it, so it went back in for full review by the committee, then by the administration, then by the current committee, meaning Dave and Sylvia, then back to administration. So I think, I think it's a, at least from the committee meeting, Dave and Sylvia felt it was in very good form.
Yeah.
And part of it is to start to give us, as a district, you as a board, the necessary policy framework as it relates to issues of student absence, and how to, you know, address that. But Melissa, actually, she did the, the lion's work with the assistant principals to line it up. So, I mean, there are other very important policies here, but that one is, I think, arguably most pivotal for the students, and took a fair amount of work.
Thank you, Bill, clarification.
Not the one allowing employees to express breast milk?
That one's very important, too.
All right, it's first read only, so at our leisure, we can take a look at these, before they come back out for a second, second read. If there are any questions or comments?
I guess I'm just, one thing that came up on, I was on the last board, that policy committee, was the idea of the attendance line and kind of calling in. So if it's in those reasons that are bulleted, it says add, add attendance line system and requirements, right? So that stays the same, basically, we didn't want to upend-
And we caught that, yeah, so I think you all, as a board, were great, you caught that, the policy, if we hadn't fixed that, would have actually wiped out the entire call-in system.
Right.
So we caught that and fixed it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to-
Do you want me just to address the professional services, because it did come up earlier?
I saw it came up, I said just that, yeah, sure.
I just want to say, it didn't have anything to do, I just, well, I want to reassure the board of two things, so it was actually a conversation that was started really, probably late last year, and it really had more to do with, at times, it's more so on, like, architectural and engineering, and we found ourselves, if we needed a professional service, that, although the board says, you know, in extraordinary circumstances, yada, yada, but, you know, sometimes it's so restrictive at that $10,000, been $10,000 for years, we had asked the policy committee to consider raising that to 20, and that was the basis of that. So I know maybe, it's always things, like sometimes time, you're like, oh, gosh, I could see it, but it, they may, I think there was, thinking it had something to do with the, you know, Gravity Goldberg RFP, and it honestly did not, because A, it would have been more than that, but even beyond that, the board, even regardless if I, we didn't do an RFP, the board still has to approve the service, and, you know, the contract for it. It's just that it waives that RFP process, which can add 30 days, and that's really only when we, and whatever, there could be a professional service, like, of another sort, you know, even for a student, quite frankly, that may exceed $10,000, like some very specific, you know, it doesn't happen often, but it happens where waiting 30 days is not a reasonable expectation, because that's how long it takes to do an RFP.
And is it accurate to say, Maureen, that that, the change in amount is a norm in other districts?
Yes.
Good question.
For professional services, yes.
Maureen, I'm glad you brought it ahead in my notes to bring up, so thank you, I mean, public comment's important, and at that moment, you can't comment on public comment, but there was the interpretation, this could have been done, one, for a particular vendor, which is completely false.
Yes.
I say with all due respect.
But I could see the timing.
And second, as superintendent, I'm never going to create a procedure to sidestep the board, you know, I'm just not going to do it, because you still would see everything, as Maureen just said.
Good point.
So I want to, and to clarify, and there's still some confusion with some of the literacy advocates, two of whom we sat with Friday, and they're committed to meeting again within mid-January, you know, very productive, good conversation, that, and we clarified then, that we stopped, that those RFPs were shut down. We shut it down in part because of the procedural failure, and we're not reissuing those right now, and we are actually taking a step back to review what we're doing with literacy at Hillside, in part, because the teachers themselves are saying, it's been five years, let's review a bit, where are we, so that, that's, everything's correctly and appropriately on hold, and also just, you know, our outcomes are very, very strong. Other districts at curriculum meetings go to Dr. Samansky and say, what are you doing to get those outcomes? We did discuss that with the advocates, and we also then said, it's a good time still to review. So we're, I just want, it's a moment just to kind of put that in, because it relates to this topic.
I also want to clarify one more thing, we do provide explicit phonics instruction at the elementary school, and in addition, all of our kindergarten teachers have been trained in Haggerty, we use that when it's needed, we make sure that we are differentiating our instruction for children, the Renaissance Star Screener is one key element that we use in terms of scooping kids up if we have concerns about their literacy performance, and that would then flag them for additional reading instruction, and/or a very close eye of monitoring, and/or movement into MTSS for intervention. So I also just want to clarify, we do provide explicit phonics instruction at the elementary school.
Thank you, thank you, Melissa. Thanks for that point, it's good. Moving on, second public comment, there is no public, agenda review, we're into the new year, like, this type is so small, I can't see. We're going to be meeting on January 8th, it's a pretty empty schedule at the moment, I'm sure it'll fill up. Yeah, all right.
And for a future meeting, I will work on adding in something, my called, you know, update on behavioral management and bullying, or something. Whether I have bullying in that exact title, even though I just said it here, I'll discuss, but it'll be something on behavioral management. I don't think we can do it as soon as that first meeting, but-
Yeah, it's probably too soon.
Yeah, mainly because, like you, everybody here is exhausted, and we're trying to get to Friday.
I think that's a great plan for your, I think, I think that should be your Christmas break, Bill, you know, Christmas homework.
Doorstep would say, hey, when you get back, can you do a presentation for the board?
I think that'd be awesome.
You can work on it over break.
You would find me in the proverbial snowbank.
I think it's a good one to give, like, to make sure the public knows.
Yes.
It's coming, right, it's coming.
Not realize, and it's so important, it's wonderful that we're doing it, not every district does it, just when the time and energy is really-
Yeah, and then, my battery died, not personally, but the computer.
Both, both, the internal battery.
Melissa, was there something else we wanted to add to the agenda, or just, or flag? I know one thing, we're showing calendar for you, the second January meeting, yes? So we're being optimistic there, because we depend on BOSI setting their dates, we depend on the state setting certain assessment dates.
Yeah, calendar, 1/22.
And so we, we'll keep it there.
But we won't know until February.
Yeah, January 2.
We, there's often an interest from families to get that figured out earlier. But just, that was one thing I wanted to flag, right, Melissa?
Yes.
I think that was the main one.
Okay, thank you. Opening up for any board comments? I have just two, a comment about the bond, some questions that popped up in my head regarding the Q and As possibly. A couple of people brought up heat issues with the turf, is there a way that we can find out from neighboring district, how many games, or practices, or events were canceled due to heat? Is that a statistic that we can find out?
Well, I mean, I think we may not be able to drill it down to like, exact, you know, size, but I think we could, we could, yeah, I think we could put out a survey to saying, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And group tops, it was zero.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, we can find, Drew can find that out, I do know the answer, zero.
Yeah, I was going to say zero.
But we'll find that out.
I would like that to be publicly-
An official zero.
Right, yeah. The shaded lights, because the diagram hit home with me, with the shaded lights, how the light pitches, is there an area that has shaded LED lights that we can give to the community so they can visit those fields? We, I think we had asked them to look into it, they weren't yet familiar with who has what. So maybe Drew might know, like, who has that kind of updated? Right, like, let them go see what it looks like.
The architects.
Right, yeah.
The architects should know, too, they put them all at Reynolds, so I'm sure they'll look at some.
I mean, I think even a diagram that is, you know, from the field perspective, it could be a artist rendering, or a photograph, and photograph's going to not really capture light distribution like that.
Better to just go see them.
And invite Burnside to come.
Exactly, so say like, if you really want to see what this impact, you know, you're saying that you're, you live X distance away from where one of the light fields, we, you know, stand on this street, on this field, and you'll see what the light distribution will be like. Yeah, we can definitely do something like that.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's it, thank you. Any other board comments?
I just have one comment, I've appreciated the robust conversation about the field today, but also, you know, I love academics, if you're academics, I'm thinking a lot about the middle school complex and structure, and thinking about, you know, the stability of our district leadership, the stability now of the school-level leadership, and just the real potential for educational change, behavioral change, and now structural change, and we haven't talked much about the middle school, but I think, ever since I've moved here, people have been like, oh, the middle school, and I've been pushing back, I'm like, the middle school can be great, and we have the potential to do that, and I think it's exciting, and people didn't talk about it, but it is a really important piece.
Oh, sure, that's a good, good segue.
So we were ready for more questions tonight on the instructional front?
I know, you know, go ahead, no, go for it.
So, um, there we go, so these were prepared by Scott and Andy together, and we asked them to, you know, come with some, a little more, if you will, meat on the bones, not just, you know, it just sounds terrible, but you'll all take it the right way, not just kind of, you know, different ways to teach, but fundamentally, and it becomes its own agenda, I haven't, so I won't go into detail, but you can look at this, you have it, we'll now, we'll now need to put it in the public record, or put it in the FAQs, but if you go to item two here, this is very, very serious. This is very serious, about, and I had heard this in one of the roundtables, and Melissa was there, we're doing roundtables around the new Assistant Super, and 12 to 15 high schoolers reported on what is said here. Shame on me for not knowing this, so I went to Andy, and I said, is this clear, and he said, this is very much, he got here, was quite surprised that it was sort of in the culture, because it's one thing to go in a hallway and sit down briefly for a discussion group, it's another thing to go out there to take tests. It's another thing to have to be moved from room to room because of accommodations, so we have got to address this.
Bill, would it be helpful to read it, to read it into the record, because I don't know if the public is-
Well, we'll-
Not going to receive this, are they?
Yeah.
Oh, it's going to be-
It's posted to, but I think then, this is, this is kind of detailed material that you will have for, so, future discussion on any of the instructional pieces, and so they, they did work on this, I didn't want them necessarily here, I want to give them the break, but they did put time into this, so it's important you have it, and Melissa's doing other digging on some kind of data and evidence on some of these pieces, but I'm hoping, you know, when we get back to more discussion around the Farragut renovation, this is really, really essential, essential stuff, and you did hear that from a few of the students.
Yeah.
And, and I think there are a few prepared to come to Mike Moore, if need be, to speak about the Farragut complex writ large. I also wanted, I'm sorry, this is board comment, I'm reacting, there is a lot of effort to think about this building as a campus, so that is underway, still trying to respect the fact that there are reasons you don't have middle schoolers mixed all the time with high schools, or vice versa, you know, but even the idea that if you had a solution, and the fifth grade wing is a testing spot for high schoolers, that's not a solution, you know, so you just want to think very smartly about it, so, all right? But it's in the record, we can come back to it if you want.
Just a quick board comment, happy holidays, everybody, enjoy the break.
All right.
Anyone else, or off we go? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye, thank you.
Thank you.